Good evening, Farmington Hills. And welcome to our January 13th, 2025, regular council meeting. And we begin our session with, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We begin the session with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I see Dirk Pronger and some of the team from Corwell this evening. So if you would come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, roll call, please. Council members Aldred?
Yes.
Boloware?
Here.
Bridges?
Here.
Bruce?
Here.
Dwyer?
Here.
Hall?
Here.
Mayor Rich?
Here.
All right. The item one, approval of the regular session meeting agenda. Is there a motion, Ms. Knoll?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda. But I would like to, because we have a packed house tonight, and item seven should be, new business should be pretty short. We definitely have some people in the audience for that. So if we could move that up, then we could free up some seats, I think, or at least a few seats.
Okay.
So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda for January 13th, but moving item seven to after the city manager update.
Well, or, okay, we could do that, or even after item two.
Point of order, is the, is the, the topic there, seven is for the IACS Commission? Are we talking about the appointments and reappointments?
Sorry, it's item eight, not seven.
Item eight, item eight.
Yep, item eight.
I support that motion.
Okay, so we're going to, the, the motion is moved by Ms. Knoll, supported by Mr. Bridges, that we move item eight to after item two, maybe? Or after city manager update, which is, okay. Why don't we move it to after item two, then?
Sure.
Move that to eight, then? Okay, great, thank you. So there's a motion, is there, this would be a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you very much. And so that was approval of the regular session meeting agenda with that one change. Item two, administration of oath to our new mayor pro tem, Mr. Dwyer.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The charter and city ordinances for the city of Farmington Hills.
Charter and the ordinances for the city of Farmington Hills.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor pro tem.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the mayor pro tem.
For the city of Farmington Hills.
The city of Farmington Hills.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, then that takes us then to item eight, consideration and approval of appointments and reappointments to various boards and commissions. And I know we have some of them here in the audience tonight. Could we please have a motion? This will be a long motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, for, for the following members that all have terms that expire February 20, February 1, 2025, for their reappointment to their respective boards and commissions. For the Farmington Area Beautification Commission, all three-year terms expiring on February 1st, 2028, Dr. Robert Levine, Joanne Rollin, Alex Carr. Board of Review, terms expire, three-year terms expiring February 1st, 2028, Thomas Downs and Andrew Exline. For the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, three-year term expiring February 1st, 2028, Kurt Brower. The Building Appeals Board, Frank Reed, for a three-year term expiring February 1st. Commission on Aging, these are all three-year terms expiring February 1st, 2028, Daniel Fantone, Fantore, and Tiffany Tully. For Commission on Children, Youth, and Family, all three-year terms expiring February 1st, 2028, Bria Lewis, Tammy Ludi, and Sharon Snodgrass. For the Commission on Community Health, three-year term expiring February 1st, 2028, is Mullie David. Commit, Committee to Increase Voter Participation, three-year terms expiring February 1st, 2028, Rose Kristoff, Marjorie Whitmore, Whitmore, and Karen Bartosz. For the Emergency Preparedness Commission, three-year terms expiring February 1st, 2028, Keith, someone help me with the last name, C. R.
Mottaro.
Okay, and Sean Thomas. For the Farmington Area Arts Commission, three-year terms, Nora Mason, Cindy Carlton, Lindsay Janock, and Don Fritz, all expiring February 1st, 2028. The Farmington Community Library Board of Trustees, Renee Murphy, a four-year term expiring February 1st, 2029. For the Fire Board of Appeals, Frank Reed, three-year term expiring February 1st, 2028. The Farmington Hills Historic Commission, Historical Commission, Earl Beck Stresser, three-year term ending February 1st, 2028, as well as John Willard. The Grand River Corridor Improvement Authority, these are four-year terms ending February 1st, 2029, Bill Smith, and Josh Deep Mann. And for the Historic District Commission, three-year terms ending February 1st, 2028, James Paulson, Ken Klimmer, and Steve Olson. For the Housing Rehabilitation Loan Board, two-year terms ending February 1st, 2027, we have Dara Groucher and Brandy Smith. For the International Property Maintenance Board, three-year term ending February 1st, 2028, is Frank Reed. For Parks and Recreation Commission, three-year terms ending February 1st, 2028, we have Stacy Deffenbach, Sidney Rushing, and David Pruter. For the Planning Commission, three-year terms ending February 1st, 2028, Joseph Mantay, Danielle Ware, and Tangi Grant. For the Water Advisory Council, two-year term for Tammy Gushard, ending February 1st, 2028, and a Joseph Del Monron, three years, February 1st, 2028. And for the Zoning Board of Appeals, both three-year terms ending February 1st, 2028, Asim Khan and Dave Urban. And for, these are new appointments for the Emergency Preparedness Commission, Brian Tyler, a three-year term ending February 1st, 2028. And for, he will fill the vacancy left by Tim Seacrest. And then for Parks and Commission, Matthew Stevens, a three-year term ending February 1st, 2028. For, and he'll, he will fill the expired vacancy left by Larry Hutchinson. And then Zachary Lee, three years, February 1st, 2028. And then for the Zoning Board of Appeals, Santa Ingel T., I think that's pronounced. I apologize if I didn't get it correct. Three-year terms, February 1st, 2028.
Thank you, so we have a motion, is there support?
Support.
We have a motion and support. This is a regular vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, and I think we have at least one of our appointees here. So if you're one of our appointees, could you stand so we can say thank you?
Right, do it on the right side.
There we are. Thank you. You have 30 seconds, okay. And, and, welcome to government. Satya Injedi is our newest appointee. He is an alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And thank you for stepping up to serve your community.
Mayor, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. And I've been in Farmington Hills for the last 22 years. And I look forward to working and supporting the city.
Thank you very much. Okay, that then leads us to item three, announcements, presentations from city boards, commissions, and public officials. And we have presentation and acceptance of the city's fiscal year 2023, 2024 audit results. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Tom Scroboli, your Finance Director, Treasurer. With us tonight is Jamie Rivette from Yo and Yo. They are our external auditors. And Jamie is going to present this presentation of the results of the fiscal year 23, 24 audit, which is for the fiscal period ended June 30th, 2024. So I'll hand back this little art, you should all have an artifact like this, as well as the audit report in your possession, that's good.
And so you can page through while she leads you through it. Alrighty, thank you very much.
Well, good evening, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm gonna go over the highlights from the audit. As Tom mentioned, my name is Jamie Rivette. I'm an audit partner with Yo and Yo CPAs, and I was in charge of overseeing your audit. Just first of all, I want to point out why you have an audit done. And that's because the State of Michigan Department of Treasury requires an independent annual audit done. And really, management's responsibility is for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And then as your auditors, my team and I come in, we audit that information presented, and then we issue the city opinions on those financial statements. The city was issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance offered. And it means there's no material modifications that need to be made to those financial statements. In addition, the city also received their Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for their June 30th, 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So I just wanted to congratulate the city on that large achievement. So my first slide I have up here is charting your general fund revenue, expenditures, and the fund balance. And usually I just do a comparison, like to point out some of the changes from last year. So your 23 column to 24. Couple things to point out there is we did have an increase in our general fund revenue compared to last year. There was increase, we saw increase in property taxes because taxable values did increase, combined with a decrease in your federal grants, gave us an increase of about $1 million over last year. We saw about a $4 million increase in expenditures in your general fund compared to last year. And that was really due to what I would consider three main areas. We saw increase in Parks and Rec Department, Police Department, and then we had some subscription agreements that we had offsetting revenue for those two, which was about $1 million for Axon Agreement. So the net of those then increased our fund balance for the year. It did increase about 5.3 million. So we started the year with 56.3 million, and then ended the year at 61.6 million. Now, my next couple of slides that I have, combine your general fund and then also the public safety fund revenue and other financing sources. And I like to use charts, I think it's a, it gives you a good picture of where your general fund and public safety revenue are coming from. So the total of those two funds are about $95.1 million. And looking at the chart, you can see too, with our property taxes and our state sources, that's about 66% of the general fund and public safety revenue are coming from those two sources. And both of those revenue streams really rely heavily on the state economy. So we did see a slight decrease in our state sources this year, but we did see an increase in those property taxes compared to last year. Now, this chart has come a long way. We've been charting your state shared revenue over the past, I think we have 10 years on this schedule here. But you can see, year over year, we've seen slight increases and increases. So we're finally getting up there. The last three years have been pretty flat. But as a point of reference, the state shared revenue was 8.3 million in 2001, and it took us 20 years to get back to there. So I just think this picture shows a, you know, a good view of what was happening in the economy and the funds that you were getting from the state. So like I said, the past three years have been pretty flat, and we are up over where we were back in, you know, 20 years ago in 2001. But it's taken a long time to get there. Now, this pie chart is your general fund expenditures, including the public safety fund expenditures too. So we have a separate millage for that. And we do have 43% of the total general fund and public safety fund expenditures are going towards public safety. So you think about that, every dollar going out of the city related to these two funds, 43% is strictly related for those public safety expenditures. So about 12.7 million are related to the public safety millage. And then we have about 25.6 million are the police and fire departments that are within your general fund. The general fund is broken down into a couple of different, what I call buckets for your fund balance. We do have some restricted funds. So we have about $1 million that are considered restricted dollars because of the construction code fees. And then we offset that with the expenditures. But those fees are strictly related for future construction. And then we have some non-spendable, about $574,000, with the remaining general fund, fund balance being unassigned, of about $60 million. Now, this graph is showing your capital investments for the governmental activities. And for the year, the city did have about 28.1 million of capital outlay expenditures that were added to assets and infrastructure to the city. The majority of those expenditures are related to roads within the city. So the city is making a conscious effort to maintain and improve those capital assets and infrastructure, which you can see, year over year, we have been adding significant amounts of capital outlay. And just to break it down a little bit further, I put it into the five key categories that we use for the financial statements. And this graph is showing the cumulative totals, so year over year. And the blue bar represents the total cumulative costs that the city has spent, and they dedicated to keeping those capital assets and infrastructure up to date. And then the red bar is showing the accumulated depreciation related to that. So in each of those five capital asset categories, you can see the city is spending more than the related depreciation. And then we have a slide on your retirement, as well as your retiree healthcare contributions. And the city has continued to pay the annual actuary determined contribution that is calculated by your actuary. So there was about 269,000 of contributions for retiree healthcare, and then 7.1 million for the pension. And then in addition to auditing the financial statements, as your auditors, we're required to gain an understanding of your internal controls. And in doing so, we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, as well as no non-compliance items that needed to be made, you made aware of. In addition, we do audit your federal awards, because the city does receive and spend more than $750,000. So this year, we audited the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds as your major, major program this year. And again, we did not identify any, any findings or material weaknesses that need to be determined. And then my last slide that I have is just related to the governance letter. So in your packet of information, there is a stapled letter. I do encourage you to read that at some point in time. It talks about some of the significant estimates within the financial statements, as well as some of the new changes that are coming up. There's always new, new standard changes. So we'll be working with Tom and his team to make sure the city's ahead of the game on that, and making sure we're in compliance. So are there any questions that I could answer for you?
Thank you, council, any questions for our auditor? Thank you very much for the report. And thank you for your time in, in looking at our materials. We appreciate you. Okay, this then takes us to correspondence. Any members of council have correspondence they would like to share? Mr. Bridges.
Thank you, council, thank you, Madam Mayor. I received a letter, council, from a resident regards to apartment issue. This lady, apartments called Wood Creek Apartments. There were some operational issues regarding furnace not working properly for several months. So I'll pass that letter on to the city manager for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, and, and we will, we will note as we go through the evening, we have all received significant correspondence on some of the issues coming before us tonight. So not that we're ignoring you, we, we received it and acknowledging. And we'll have more conversation as the evening goes on. That then takes us to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine, administrative, or non-controversial by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There is no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration. And these items will be read by our new mayor pro tem, Mr. Dwyer. And before we do that, for those of, because I see a lot of new faces here this evening, for those of you who would like to make public comment as we go through the evening, we have three public hearings that we're doing this evening. So if you would like to speak on an item that's coming before us in the public hearing, we request that you please complete a blue card and, and send it, give it over to the clerk, and we will make sure that you are called up, and I'll explain the process as we do it. But that helps us keep things moving as, as we go. The other, if you would like to make general public comment at the end of the business of the evening, similarly, a blue card would go to the clerk stating what it is you would like to talk about. And so that way, we will make sure everyone who wants to be heard is heard in a timely manner. So, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Item nine, recommend approval of the revised budget study session meeting dates of May 13th and May 14th, 2025. Item 10, recommend approval of the rescheduling the regular city council meeting of March 10th, 2025 to March 3rd. Item 11, recommend approval of award of bid for sign shop, latex printer, plotter, and laminator to Grisco Inc. in the amount of $35,804.56, CMR 12505. Item 12, recommend the approval of purchase of community engagement and recruiting police vehicle to Lunghammer Ford for one 2025 Ford Mustang in the amount of $57,756. And to utilize existing suppliers to equip the vehicle with necessary emergency equipment, graphics, computer, and radio in the amount not to exceed $37,244, CMR 12506. Item 13, recommend approval of authorization of agreement with Civic Plus for technology solutions in the estimated annual amount of $20,000, CMR 12507. Item 14, recommend approval of the extension of bid for as-needed facilities, electrical and interior lighting upgrades to gray bar for the duration of the contract with the possible extensions, CMR 12508. Item 15, recommend approval of the emergency repair of kitchen sanitary line at the Kostik Center with Guardian Plumbing in the amount of $68,648.99, CMR 12509. Item 16, recommend approval of the extension of the agreement for the 2025 spring/summer citywide planning program with Crimboi Nursery, Inc., CMR 12510. Item 17, recommend approval of the city council study session meeting minutes of December 9th, 2024. And the last is, is 18, recommend approval of the city council regular session meeting minutes of December 9th, 2024.
Thank you, we have a motion, is there support? Dr. Bruce?
Yes, I would move approval of the consent agenda. Items nine through 18 is read by the mayor pro tem.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and support. This is going to be a roll call vote, so.
Who's supported?
So.
Who's supported? I'll support.
Okay, thank you. So read by the mayor pro tem, motion by Dr. Bruce, support by Ms. Knoll. Thank you very much. Lot going on up here tonight. So if we could, please do roll call.
Yes. Council members Boloware? Yes. Bridges?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes.
Thank you.
And one more motion, please.
And? I'm sorry, and council member Aldred.
Yes.
Thank you.
My voice in.
Lot going on up here tonight. All right, let's try this again. Is there a motion for the items 17 and 18, please?
I did include those.
Oh, did you? Okay, so it was all, okay.
I got nine through 18.
Very good, then we're good. All right, that then lets us go on to council member comments and announcements. Anyone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may make the comment, we're talking about audit tonight and spending. I want to point out the police vehicle purchased under the consent agenda came, was funded through federal grant money. And I think that's worth celebrating as, you know, where we can use grant money to help assist our budgets is certainly welcome. So that was a good success for the city, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, please.
I wanted to recognize our city manager and city administration and our director of finance, Tom, for the excellent job we're doing fiscally in our city, as evidenced by the unmodified opinion stated by Yo and Yo, our auditor. And it's a testimony to our city's administration, fiscal, stability approach toward doing our business in our city. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yes.
Ms. Boloware?
You know, there are a number of public hearings on the agenda for this evening. And whichever way you counsel decides, there are going to be some members who like, who support our decision, and some that, you know, who do, who do not. But I just want to go on record, you know, that whatever decision, you know, that I make and council make, we're gonna make it in the best interest of the city. And it's always a difficult thing to do.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to mention that I came to the city 40 years ago. I came in 1985 and served as your police chief for 23 years. And then I went to Warren. Looking forward now, coming back and serving as your mayor pro tem for the next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just to acknowledge that we did have a Walk the Hawk last Tuesday. We have another one coming up in February. I think the date is the 11th. And we are going to have to move the March one. I believe that's now going to be around March the 3rd, a Tuesday at noon. So watch for more information on that. The wintertime Walk the Hawks are actually in the Hawk on the third floor so that we can all stay nice and toasty warm. And if you do need somewhere to walk indoors, the third floor of the Hawk is fabulous for that. And so let's go on to, anyone else, council? Okay, let's go on then to our city manager updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very briefly, we are in winter now. We actually did get some snowfall. So just wanted to remind our residents that we do have a snow plowing winter maintenance policy. And essentially, folks might wonder why we're not plowing their streets in the neighborhoods. And that's because we only plow in the neighborhoods when we get four inches or more of snow in, in those subdivisions, as recorded by our DPW out at Halsted Road. However, if there are intersections where, that are, that are, intersections or areas in your neighborhood that are slippery or icy, please give the city managers a call, the city manager's office a call or send us an email. Be happy to send some folks out to salt those intersections and make them safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
May I have the city manager elaborate? If, for example, there's two inches of snow today and two inches tomorrow, and the total accumulation is four, tell us what the policy is.
Now you're playing trick, trick, trick questions on us. Look, we, we monitor it. So, I mean, if it's rational and we've gotten, you know, accumulation over a 24 or 36-hour period, we'll make the call to go into the neighborhoods. But, yeah, we, we monitor that, we use rational thought. But it seems like we get these angry inches every once in a while. And we look to our DPS and our police department to keep the streets monitored and make, make everybody safe.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
As long as we're on that general topic, I got a couple of calls this week from people saying, hey, what's the deal with the lines in the road right before the snow comes? We're brining with beet juice. So if you So if you see lines in the road, that's what we're doing to pretreat the roads so that when the snowfall comes, when the ice comes, it melts pretty quickly. So, we're saving you a lot of money, and it's less corrosive than salt. Update for everyone there. That then takes us to why we are, see so many people here this evening. We have three public hearings. The first one is item four, public hearing and consideration of amendment to planned unit development 1, 2025, Corwell Health Campus Sign Change located at 28050 Grand River Avenue. Now, let's just talk a little bit about how these go. So, the process is this. The city staff member responsible is going to give a bit of an update, and then the proponent, whoever is proposing the item, will have the opportunity to speak. Then council, if it wishes, may ask a few preliminary questions, and then we open to public hearing. Now, I do not have any cards at this time for this first hearing, yet. And so, then we would have public speak, and then that would be where then council comes in and asks additional questions and deliberates before deciding what action we may or may not take this evening. So, I hope that helps. I do need to say this since we do have so many new people. In public comment, you get three minutes, and you can see we have a three-minute shot clock. That lets you know how long you have to speak. When your three minutes is up, we ask that you please step aside. What I will do is I will announce who's going to be speaking, as well as who's, I'll say, on deck, who's going to be the one to follow, so they're able to line up and we're able to keep the hearing moving. And everybody will be able to get their chance to speak in a timely manner. We ask that there is no applaud, no clapping, no cheering, no booing. Let's be respectful, let people speak. There are going to be, as Ms. Bolaware said, there are going to be things you agree with, there are going to be things you may disagree with, but let's all be respectful of our neighbors, please. So, with that, good evening.
Good evening. Our first public hearing item for this evening is an application from Signworks of Michigan for the Corwell, which is an amendment to the PUD number one of 2015. They are located along Grand River. They have requested an amendment in order to replace an existing 10-foot, 8-inch high-tall and 7-foot-wide freestanding sign at Boulevard entrance to the Corwell campus with a new 12-foot-tall, 6-foot-wide freestanding sign at the same location. The amendment is necessary in this case because the signage allowance for the campus is addressed within the existing PUD agreement, which does not currently permit a 12-foot-high freestanding sign. I'm going to quickly go through the procedural history. They've had two meetings before the planning commission on this item, October 17th of 2024 and November 21st of 2024. Both of those sets of minutes are in your packet if for reference. The planning commission, at their last meeting, recommended approval of this PUD amendment to city council, and that is what we have scheduled for this evening. I do have our planning consultant, Jill, here from Giffords Webster, to give a summary of the request. And then, as the mayor mentioned, we'll have time for the proponent, who is here this evening, prior to opening up for public hearing comments.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Happy New Year. Jill Bame, calling consultant with Giffords Webster, to give you a very quick overview of this. But in the spirit of helping folks understand if this is their first time they've been to a meeting here at council, this public hearing, as well as the next two, are related to the type of development review called a planned unit development, or a PUD. In the PUD process, we are able to provide some flexibility with the application of the zoning ordinance in exchange for some other kinds of benefits to get a project that might not normally be approved under that regular zoning requirements that we have. When things change, like in this case with the Beaumont-Corwell project, sometimes they have to come back and have their agreement amended. At the end of these processes, which follows typically three meetings, the planning commission, one is to decide whether the planning commission will make a determination on whether they feel the project has met the qualifications that are outlined in the zoning ordinance for them to move forward. Then they have a public hearing, a meeting to set the public hearing, and then the public hearing. So they've had three meetings with, in this case, two for this project, and then they come to you for the final approval. And then, as you know, there is a development agreement that is negotiated then based on these approvals between the developer and the city to ensure that what is agreed to by council and the applicant, the developer, everybody's on the same page with what the waivers were and how the project will eventually be built out. So, from time to time, projects need to be amended for various reasons. In this case, it's for a sign. Part of the history of this planned unit development approval originally was that any change to it had to come back before planning commission for a public hearing, as well as to council for additional approvals. And this is just, as was already mentioned, for a sign, their ground sign, currently 10 feet, 8 inches tall. The proposed time would be 12 feet tall, so they need a approval of 1 foot, 4 inches to be allowed in the development agreement for the project. That's about all I have to say. If you've got questions for me, or I can turn it right on over to the applicant.
Please do.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here today, and happy 2025. My name is Claire McCready, and I am the senior project manager for Signworks of Michigan. With me today is Anne Frass, the owner of Signworks of Michigan, who will be able to field any technical questions about the sign fabrication. And then also with us today is Dirk Pronger, the president of the Corwell Health Hills Hospital. Thank you so much for being with us here today, and he will be able to answer questions about the hospital or the surrounding community. So, we approach you today with the request of such as, like Jill said, a height increase to the main entrance monument sign. The new monument sign is proposed to be 12 feet tall and 6 feet wide, or 72 square feet, which is about 2 square feet smaller than what it currently is. We are also requesting to replace the main wall sign that identifies the name of the hospital on the building. The proposed signage would read Corwell Health Farmington Hills Hospital. So, if I can go through a couple of slides here, as you've seen, this is the city of Farmington Hills zoning map section of the hospital. From here, you can see that the monument sign in the section is zoned as B3 here, in addition to the wall sign being in the special purpose district. Just for some really brief history here, this is what the conditions of the monument sign to look like, looked like from 2007 to 2013. We estimate that this is about 8 feet by 8 feet, so 64 square feet tall and wide. From 2014 to 2018, another sign that was what we assumed to be 8-foot tall by 8-foot wide. As you can see from the truck behind it, it looks like that truck's having some difficulty seeing around the sign as it turns onto the one-way street of Grand River Avenue. This is the existing conditions of the monument sign, commonly referred to as sign E01 in the plans that you most likely have received for what is proposed. Okay, and so right now, as you can see, it sits at 10 feet and 8 inches tall. This is the proposed monument sign, as it sits 12 feet tall, and it is 6 feet wide, which is 1 foot less in width than it currently sits. And these two modifications are specifically to promote vehicular traffic visibility, which, of course, as a visual communications industry, our approach is always going to be the health and welfare of visual communications and making sure that the roads are safe with this type of sign. So, we'd also just like to point out that the top 4 feet of the signage is roughly all of the most crucial information for the hospital. So, you see the name, and then also the directing to the emergency area, which we feel is very important, so. Additionally, the existing conditions for the street view of the wall sign, as you drive through from that entrance, you will see the word just Beaumont right there, and that is the only sign that is currently, the main wall sign identifying the hospital. And so, for our proposal, we're proposing Corwell Health Farmington Hills Hospital, which we feel better identifies the hospital and has a more of a sense of community to it, too, with the name of Farmington Hills on it as well. We would love to, in addition to reviewing the existing conditions, review our reasoning for the proposed signage. We also understand that you all have a lot to get through today. So I would love to talk more about it, but I'm opening up to see if you have questions first, or if you'd like me to speak more about our reasoning here today.
Counsel, so we have one person who submitted a card. Do we want to ask questions, or would you like to hear from the one person, and then we'll do our questions? Okay, so then I'd like to call up PG for three minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm now opening the public hearing. Thank you.
Did you want an address?
If you could state what street you live in, but not the number, please.
Okay, and I can just say that I have a P.O. box. Okay, thank you. PG, I just wanted to thank this company, Corwell Health, for all that they're doing. You know, whenever we grow up and we know of something to be a particular name, when they change the name, you always feel some kind of way. And I always thought that Beaumont was like the name for the hospital. But then after you get a certain age and you realize, when you're going to the doctor, what do your doctor say? They tell you strengthen your core, and that'll make you well. So, I put the two and two together, and I thought that was a great name change. I'm in total support of the signage change design because a lot of the signs that are more horizontal as opposed to vertical, they, you can't really see around them. And if there's bushes and other landscaping, it's just not always a safe transition. So, I'm in total support. Great presentation, awesome and accessible head of the hospital. Thank you so much. I'm in support.
Thank you very much. And we have no one else wishing to speak on this matter, and so I am closing the public hearing. Counsel? Yes, I see Dr. Bruce and Mr. Bridges.
Ready to make a motion?
I'm inclined to do the same thing. You go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. I would move, or resolve that the application to amend PUD 1, 2015, dated September 19th, 2024, submitted by Signworks of Michigan Incorporated, is approved, and further resolve that the city attorney prepare the appropriate PUD agreement stipulating the final PUD approval conditions and authorizing the identified zoning deviations for city council consideration and final approval. And the reason I make the motion is, even though the sign is bigger, and I'm not a huge fan of signs, as the council knows, this is a hospital. It's very important to have high visibility. People are coming here because they're having an emergency, they're coming to visit family or friends, they, medical procedures, whatever. And there is a line of sight issue because of the other sign that's there that makes it a little bit more difficult to see the existing sign. So, I think that's very important to have that in our community. It's a safety issue, as far as I'm concerned. So, I think it's a nice-looking sign, and I think it'll look very good for the hospital. So that's my motion. Thank you.
We have motion and support. Any further discussion? Mr. Aldridge?
To make the comment, I think both signs are an improvement, so, good job.
No, thank you. Okay, this is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. We look forward to seeing the new signage.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Item five, public hearing and consideration of planned unit development 2, 2024, including site plan 56-8, 2024, Mulberry Park and the Tabernacle Multi-Family Housing located on 13 Mile Road west of Middlebelt Road, CMR 12502. Good evening again.
I realized after I sat down that I didn't introduce myself. Charmaine Cutler-Schmaltz, Director of Planning and Community Development, so we can just add that to the record. The PUD plan of 2024 is located at the south side of 13 Mile, just west of Middlebelt Road. It is a property that's been brought forward by Steve Schaefer. Two owners are Detroit Baptist Manor and Moby Investments. We've got a quick aerial for reference. The current zoning is RA1. The subject application proposes a two-part development under separate names across seven parcels on the south side of 13 Mile, just west of Middlebelt Road. Mulberry Park is just under 6 acres in size, and the Tabernacle just over 6 acres in size. Mulberry Park is proposed to consist of nine buildings with 40 units of attached two-story townhouses. The Tabernacle is proposed to be age-restricted and consists of nine buildings with 36 units of attached one-story ranches. Background for this project, they have had three meetings before planning commission, as is the standard process for a planned unit development qualification on April 18th of 2024, set for public hearing on October 17th of 2024, and November 21st of 2024 was the public hearing, at which time the planning commission made its recommendation for approval of the plan to city council. The next step in this process is this evening for the public hearing before the council after hearing from the applicant, our consultant, and the public. So next up, we have our consultant, Jill, from Giffords Webster.
Thank you. So, as was just stated, this project is on the south side of 13 Mile Road, and it is two different types of housing within one project, within one access from 13 Mile Road with a ring road serving that. Half of them essentially would be the age-restricted, and then the other half, the other 40 units are the townhome-style project. The planning commission, back in April, granted the qualification of finding that the project, which does not currently, could not be built under the existing zoning of RA1, which is single-family, large-lot residential, which is consistent with the north and the south sides. But they, to the west is Baptist Manor, and that is zone RC1. And this project does fall under the density classifications. If we were to look at that, it would be comparable to the RC1. The planning commission found that of the eight standards that they could look at for the planned unit development eligibility, that they found that three of them, excuse me, four of them were applicable to this project, primarily due to the preservation of open space and natural features. While there are a significant number of trees that would be removed, there are many trees that are going to be added on the site. We can talk about that in a moment. As well as to meet one of the goals of the master plan, as you know, we've been working on that for the last two years, looking really primarily at a lot of things in the, in the community, but also addressing a need for housing within the community. And knowing that this was an area of interest before and during the master plan project process, the planning commission kept this area as a special planning area and made the classification of Flex Residential to take care of an opportunity that would be something different, a different kind of housing type than a single-family residential detached, as we would see in our existing single-family neighborhoods. With that, the application shows that, and the site plan shows, that the lot sizes and the dimensional setbacks are essentially able to be met, as well as the parking, the circulation, and the lighting and the open space and the landscaping. We do note that with the tree removal, there are a number of trees that are being removed. 485 trees would be required to be replaced. 400 are being proposed to be replaced onsite, with another 40 proposed to be offsite. And so there is a number, 45 trees that the applicant is requesting be also included as part of the waiver for the planned unit development itself. So essentially, the relief from the zoning ordinance standards are to permit the attached units, which would be something that we don't currently permit in the RA1 district, and then also allow that at the RC1 density, and then permit the repl- and then also allow that at the R C one density, and then permit the replacement of those forty-five trees to not be planted, with forty of the replacement trees to be planted offsite, and that would be to the south and to the east. Happy to answer any questions on that, or I'm still here if you have questions after.
Thank you. Dr. Bruce?
Just real quick, I think you might have said this. The current zoning is R A one.
Correct.
If this were approved, this would be consistent with about an R C one, correct?
Yes.
In terms of density?
Mm-hmm.
To the south of this is R A one, correct?
Yes.
How about to the east, directly to the east? Is that R A one as well?
Is R A one as well.
Okay. And then across Thirteen Mile Road, what is that?
Same.
So it's all R A one, pretty much, except to the very west side of the property, which has Baptist Manor?
Correct.
So it's surrounded on three sides really by R A one?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bridges?
Yes, a quick question regarding the relief that the opponent is suggesting that the city provide. And the benefit to the city, I mean, in regards to what, what, how do you gauge the relief that the opponent is requesting based on the public benefit to the city? What are, what, how do you see those two areas?
That's a good question. If you look at the letter, at our letter, that's in your packets on page four of that, we have the listed items that the planning commission considered under their qualification. And again, that was those four items. They're listed in bold, and they relate to the open space. To set aside open space, so looking at that area along the south edge and on the east side as well, to looking at trees and landscaping beyond minimum requirements, provision of open space again, and to bring about the redevelopment of sites where an orderly change of use is determined to be desirable. So again, thinking about the master plan's call for additional housing, that this project, the planning commission felt was at a reasonable density consistent with the properties to the west from Baptist Manor, and also satisfying that goal of the master plan at a level that is lower than some of the projects that we've seen in the past.
Does a consultant look at the impact on the existing neighbors around there regarding the R A? Does a consultant view that, consider that point? Regarding the impact of this particular development will have on the R A one district? How does a consultant review that?
Well, I think the one interesting thing about this is that the entrance and exits only onto Thirteen Mile, so there is no traffic that's going to be coming into the neighborhoods to the south, as well as the significant green belt there between this property and the property to the south and the properties to the east, I think do provide a good amount of screening to help ease that transition.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are no other questions at this point in time, we will hear from the proponent. And then we will have the public hearing.
There's a full screen button right here. All right. Well, thank you very much, Jill. Thank you very much, Charmaine, for the introduction. Good evening, planning commission. It is a pleasure to be in front of you this evening.
Counsel.
Oh, sorry, counsel. One of those days.
You already did that one.
My name is Aaron Schaefer, and I am with Schaefer Development. I am here with my father, Steve Schaefer. Many of you likely remember his face. We've been doing business in the city of Farmington, Farmington Hills for well over thirty years, and my twin brother Spencer, who's sitting here in the crowd. We really love the community. So this is a piece of property that's very close to home and right next to our office as well, so I'm very excited to talk this evening about this. In addition, we have a couple of folks from Baptist Manor. We've got Ryan Doley, as well as Ryan Gilleski. And then we've got David Straub here of M I Homes. He's sitting in the crowd here as well. We are looking to partner with M I Homes for the fair sale component, the two-story townhouses on Mulberry Park. So jumping right into it, I just want to provide a quick overview on the presentation. I promise I will do my best to keep this as quick as possible, but we do have a lot to cover here. We're going to first talk a little high level on property details, which the consultants have gone over, so I'll zoom through that real quick. I want to talk about a few points in the Giffords Webster review letter, specifically this flex residential zoning category. And then I'd also like to talk about the concept plan evolution. When this plan was first presented to you guys back in two thousand and twenty-three, if you recall, it was the Caldian Community Foundation proposal for the subsidized apartments to where we are today, which is a mixed generational community, consisted of much-needed missing middle housing in the city of Farmington Hills. We'll finally go into the fun part, the renderings and the landscape plan. And I know one of the city councillors had quite a bit of questions on the landscape plan and the trees. I can address that to your satisfaction in that comment. And finally, neighborhood outreach. I'm not too sure how familiar the commissioners are, but there was a change.org petition that was circulated to a couple of the neighbors, and I am prepared to address each and every of the seven points that the neighbors had brought up. And my hope is that'll provide some clarity when public comment time does come. So hopefully that'll expedite things a little bit. And then finally, I'll show some more detailed side and rear elevations of the building, as well as the existing conditions of the residents. If you've had a chance to drive by Thirteen Mile before you get to the Baptist Manor complex, you can see those houses are quite in, in disrepair. So we'd be looking as part of this development to get rid of all that nastiness and really do something nice and pretty along the Thirteen Mile frontage. So property details, again, we are under contract for the twelve point oh four acres just due west of Baptist Manor. You can actually see the existing Baptist Manor facility in the west side of the community. We are under contract for the parcels in blue with Moby Investments, and then we are working in conjunction with Baptist Manor to help them entitle their project and get this through the approval process. So essentially, we're shepherding this as one P U D. As you can see, the property, the property is zoned in that red box as R A one, one-family residential. The parcels to the north, the south, as well as the east also have that R A one, one-family residential zoning. And to the west, where we have the more unique zoning, R C one on the Baptist Manor property. Per the city's prior master plan, which was last updated in two thousand and nine, shows the property as single-family residential. Then finally, where I want to focus the majority of the discussion is the two thousand and twenty-four master plan and future land use map, which is hard to kind of see, but you see up in that northeasternmost quadrant of the township where Northwestern Highway is, I've got a red box there. And that classifies all the properties south of Thirteen Mile, just east of Baptist Manor, as that flex residential zoning category, which I'll talk about in a little greater detail in the following slide. So since the two thousand and nine master plan, this site has been designated as a special planning area, and it has been recognized that the thorough fair frontage of Thirteen Mile, particularly between Orchard Lake and Middle Belt Roads, are less desirable for single-family residential lots. Per the two thousand and twenty-four master plan, the future land use update has amended these properties as flex residential. And flex residential permits for a more creative redevelopment approach, including the clustering of townhome or attached ranch units consistent with our proposed site plan. And one of the main objectives of the flex residential designation is the clustering of units to preserve substantial open space. And as you'll see on our site plan, a clustered development really enables us to respect adjacent established communities, namely the Holly Hill Farms and Westgate Residence, that about us, and provide a far greater setback than what the ordinance permits. If you can take a look here at the table, if we were to develop the property as is, and think of me as a Holly Hills resident, that shared southern property line, there could be a home as close as thirty-five feet from the back of that shared property line to where that residence would be. We're proposing almost double, roughly sixty-five to seventy-four feet from the back of that southern property line to the back of the buildings themselves. And where the nicest tree rows are is really that southern property line and eastern property line. We've clustered the development to really preserve as many of those large trees as possible. And I'll talk a little bit more about the trees in a later slide, some of the invasive, low-quality plantings, really looking to make something pretty and special here on this development. Now, I know we had quickly went through the P U D qualification, one of the consultants did, but really the two things I want you to remember is the preservation of open space and natural features. I'll talk about it a lot in this presentation, but just keep those two points in the back of your mind. We did meet four P U D criterion, hence us being here today. Now moving into the concept plan evolution. So what you're seeing in front of you is a six, or seventy-six unit development. On the west side, where that box is in orange, you'll see the Tabernacle, which again is thirty-six one-story ranches that are designed in mind for a fifty-five and older demographic. These units will be operated by Baptist Manor and continue to be age-restricted, meaning that you must be fifty-five or older to live in these communities. Residents can age in place and have the unique ability to utilize services through the existing Baptist Manor campus. Understand that many people who've gotten older, or finally empty nesters, kids have left, there's really not many opportunities for them to downsize, get into a more maintenance-free, commitment-free style of housing, and this is the goal we're trying to attract with the Baptist Manor, the Tabernacle development. On the right side, on the east, where you see the blue box, is Mulberry Park. This is a conventional two-story townhome development that is more aimed toward a younger or first-time homebuyer demographic, looking to establish roots in the community. And again, we've got a grand total of seventy-six units. You can see it here in that red box, but that is that tree preservation wildlife corridor area that really is a hallmark of this development. As a result of clustering the units, we're really able to do a good job to preserve that most sensitive tree row backing up to the nine Holly Hill Farms residents. The plan that you see here today meets all the suggestions made by fire and engineering departments. We've provided a boulevard entrance and ring road rather than two separate entrances on Thirteen Mile, and per the engineering department's suggestion, we aligned that boulevard entrance to Westgate Drive. That is the Westgate subdivision just due north of us. In addition, we expanded the drive aisles on both sides to twenty-seven feet wide to make it a little easier to get into and exit the development. We decided not to pursue with a stub street to the east due to the topographical and grade challenges. It's very difficult when you traverse further east down Thirteen Mile and closer to Middle Belt Road to continue this trend of development, clustered attached housing, because of some of the reverse grade challenges, and two of the homes were recently sold to individuals who are going to continue to keep them as single-family residences. So in our collective opinion, that argument of continuity of development, it more or less stops at that eastern property line, really due to the topographical challenges further east, getting closer to the River Rouge Tributary and closer to the Middle Belt Road. So now I want to go backwards, the initial proposal that was brought to you in fall/winter of two thousand and twenty-three. As you recall, the Caldian Community Foundation had a proposal for an a hundred-unit, two- and three-story subsidized apartment development. Due to the level of neighborhood feedback, as well as feedback from, from the city, they decided to withdraw their application and actually contacted us shortly after they withdrew the application, asking us for help. And as an expert in real estate development, you know, in the metro Detroit market, we were ready to, you know, pick up that difficult, difficult task. So this is the very first proposal when we first acquired, tied up the property earlier this year. We had a proposal for a fifty-four unit, for-sale, three-story townhouse that has a rooftop balcony. As you can see here, we met with staff, as well as the HOAs of both Westgate and Holly Hills on a few occasions, to really share the plan and solicit their feedback. And again, we shared these plans in January, and in March, we decided to delay our P U D application, really due to neighbor feedback, specifically building height, density, as well as traffic. And on this parse, on this plan, we had roughly nine units to the acre. On the prior Caldian Community Foundation, you're a little closer to sixteen and a half units to the acre. We met with the surrounding HOAs, and really what they said spoke to heart to us. So we decided to go back to the drawing board. And in addition, staff had suggested that we get in contact with Baptist Manor to, again, ensure the continuity of development trends along Thirteen Mile, which led us to the combined proposal that we were politely asking for you to vote for this evening. And finally, the plan I showed you earlier, the combined seventy-six unit development. We feel that this development is much-needed multi-generational housing, providing the community at large with a missing middle housing catering to the needs of couples and young families who are looking to build and establish roots, and again, enroll their children into the Farmington Hills School District, as well as seniors seeking maintenance and commitment-free forms of housing where they can age in place. And this plan you see in front of you, roughly seventy-six units on twelve point oh four acres, has a total density of roughly six point three units to the acre. Reason I mention that is you look at these three proposals. Caldian Community Foundation, sixteen and a half units an acre. The three-story townhouse, nine units an acre. And finally, where we're at today, this combined development on twelve acres, roughly six point three units per acre. We've really done a lot to try to get all the neighbors on board and really embrace the style of development. And the combined P U D is situated on roughly twice the acreage as the original proposal, yet we are still twenty-four percent less dense than that proposal. But again, keep in mind twelve acres versus six acres. So now I want to move into the fun part of the plan. What is this community going to look like? So you can see here in orange, those are the proposed one-story ranches for the Tabernacle. And then to the right, you can see the proposed townhouses for Mulberry Park. It's a little hard to see here. I've got some bigger slides later on in the presentation, but we worked very hard with, with Baptist Manor's architectural team to design a unit that was very complementary to the two-story townhouse. So we have the same grays, the same blues, similar garages with some nice, you know, window features to bring in some light. So we've really worked hard to make something that we're proud of as a whole. Now moving on to the landscape plan. It is important to note that our landscape plan was carefully designed based on numerous site walks, numerous H O A meetings, and all the thoughts and feedback we received at all of those meetings. Our proposed buffering, natural screening, and landscape design were items of top priority at each and every meeting we attended. We continue to meet with neighbors, and we'll be submitting a revised landscape plan in short order once we've had the chance to speak with all the residents, namely some folks who want to see some additional evergreens, such as those two firs you see in the upper right-hand corner, sprinkling those in a little more just to create some greater privacy between us and them. So won't change too much, but again, we're looking to, you know, listen to what neighbors have to say, and if they have, say, hey, give me some of those trees that are red and pink and yellow, and then in the fall, it looks really nice and pretty. We're more than open to doing that in order to make neighbors happy and give us their voice of support for this community. There are a balance of trees that we are looking to plant offsite, which I'll describe later in this presentation. On this plan here, you can see there are over four hundred trees that we are looking to plant as part of this development. All the trees in green, mainly the trees on the southern property line, the eastern property line, and part in the northern property line are trees we are, existing trees we're looking to preserve. And again, all the trees in black are the new trees we're looking to plant as part of this development. Now moving into neighborhood outreach, this is more of the meat and potatoes in my discussion. So again, I wanted to do my very best to talk about the seven concerns that residents bring up in the change.org petition. And the first thing that residents brought up was extreme tree removal. And again, I apologize for repeating myself, but I feel it is important. As part of this proposed development, we will be planting over four hundred new trees. Ninety-three of them will be in that southern property line where we're looking to fill in any voids, so roughly twenty-three percent of the trees will be there. As part of this community, we will be removing three hundred sixty-eight of the existing trees on the property. After doing a very detailed analysis of our tree calculations, we determined that about a hundred sixty-seven, or forty-five percent of the existing trees on the property are what are considered low-quality. Box elders, crab apples, cottonwoods. I can't tell you how much I dislike crab apples. Them hitting my roof, it sounds like a grenade going off. So we're going to make sure to get rid of any of those lower-quality tree species as part of this development. And again, speaking to Councilman Bridges' point, the ordinance does require that we plant four hundred and eighty-five trees. However, we're only able to fit four hundred without having any conflicts as trees mature, them growing on top of each other. I am pretty sure there may be an opportunity to put some additional trees here and there, so rest assured, we're going to try to get that eighty-five number down and try to plant as many of those as possible onsite. Likewise, if we're not able to plant them onsite, I've got four recommendations here. I've reached out to almost all nine landowners on that shared southern property line of Holly Hills. Some have expressed commitment in putting some trees in their backyards, others said, hey, just put some nice firs over. over my fence on your property line so I don't have to see what's going on northward. So we're currently talking with landowners to figure out what they want to see. We've also been in conversations with Mr. Dunn, who's the single-family residence to our east. He has expressed interest in planting trees and we're looking to do so. In addition, there are a couple residences of Westgate along Thirteen Mile, just west of Westgate Drive, where there's some gaps in their foliage along Thirteen Mile. And should we make any contact with them, we would be looking to plant some additional trees there as well because they'll, of course, be backing up to the Tabernacle ranches. And then another creative idea is the Thirteen Mile frontage along Baptist Manor's existing facility. So rest assured, we are looking to get creative here and make this as pretty of a development and also beautify the Thirteen Mile corridor as well. I think that's a plus. One of the other comments was traffic concerns on Thirteen Mile. So early on in the process, we did retain Fleece and Van and Brink, a traffic consultant. And that traffic impact study was submitted by fire and engineering staff. And there were very minor comments with the report in general. Back in October, when we had two entrances along Thirteen Mile, engineering did request that we align one of the entrances with Westgate, which we did. And then most importantly, we met with fire and engineering just a couple of weeks ago when we decided to go with this boulevard entrance. At the end of the day, we thought from a life-safety perspective, it was better to have a boulevard rather than two entrances, one on the Tabernacle and one on the Mulberry Park development. And that was something that they found acceptable. And again, we're looking to increase the size of those boulevards to twenty-seven feet to make it a little easier. One of the last things I want to talk about is construction noise for multiple years. I want to make, I want the residents to know that, you know, what they said, we're hearing it loud and clear. And we want to give them some definitive timeframes just so that they can be aware as to how development is going to progress on this site. So once we secure approval and once we get all of our outside agency approvals and permits, it can finally put a shovel in the ground, we're anticipating roughly four to five months to do all earthwork, dirt balancing, earthmoving, construction of the basins, stormwater detention basins, and all of the underground utilities, water, sanitary, and storm. And again, we're looking to have that done for the entire twelve-acre site within four to five months. For the Mulberry Park, again, the two-story townhouses were projecting roughly an eighteen- to twenty-four-month lead time from the first time we moved dirt to the point there's a for-sale sign in the ground. And the reason being is some of these units will be spec units and that MI Homes will construct the units. And what you see is what you get. And the homeowner can buy the unit. Some of the more premium units, specifically the ones that back up to the tree stands, will likely be more custom units where a future homeowner could specify, I want floor plan A, B, C. I want this addition. I don't want that addition. I want two bedrooms. I want three bedrooms. So that's why we're saying that year-and-a-half to two-year timeframe from the date someone's out there moving dirt to the date someone can move in. For the Tabernacle, since it's a little different, remember, an age-restricted fifty-five-plus apartment home, all the floor plans are standardized. So we're assuming more twelve-to-fourteen-month lead time for the development of that. Again, things are subject to change, especially with weather. But I wanted to provide some surety to the neighbors and residents. And again, all contractors working onsite will strictly abide by all City of Farmington Hills regulations on construction activity and hours of operation. Regarding the loss of wildlife habitat, again, that boxed area in red, we're looking to provide a really large tree preservation and wildlife corridor area for wildlife to seek refuge and traverse eastward and onto the River Rouge Tributary. Regarding the loss of privacy, we will be filling in any of those gaps along the southern property line. And in addition, there will be language in the HOA bylaws where no clearing activity can occur above and beyond where that tree preservation line is established. So again, that's one way to protect the neighbors to the south and other neighbors that that will not be disturbed and remain in its current state. In addition, residents are not allowed to place any structures beyond their covered patio or open patio structure. Regarding drainage issues, as part of our development, the site will over, or will undergo mass grading to ensure that all of the storm, or most, a majority of the stormwater makes its way into the basins, then flows into the Thirteen Mile stormwater system at an agricultural rate. One thing I want to talk about is the existing drainage, how all seven properties stand along Thirteen Mile. Currently, the water makes its way south from Thirteen Mile and then slowly traverses its way eastward, really impacting the neighbors that back up to the three Moby properties the worst. We had a chance to walk all those residents' rear yards. We know it's a big issue. So we heard them loud and clear that as part of this development, we wanted to do something so that we could help their, you know, rear yards not, you know, feel like a wetland. And then this is the drainage exhibit post-construction. So anything northward of the units, the site is being graded so that the water gets caught in the swales or in the thirteen, or in the stormwater system along the roadway. That water will then make its way into the basin and then at an agricultural grade, make its way into Thirteen Mile and eventually into the River Rouge Tributary. The only area that will not be, that the water will not flow into is this whole area in blue. And the reason being is we didn't want to perform additional mass grading and we did not want to remove any of those high-quality trees that are situated along that south and southeastern property boundary. So again, a majority of that water is going to make its way to Thirteen Mile with a lot less making its way into the neighbors compared to currently where it all flows south and eventually east. Last thing I want to talk about is decrease in surrounding property values. We're projecting these townhomes to start in the four-hundred-thousand-dollar range. And homes are selling in this area in the low-to-mid threes to upper sevens or eights if it's larger residents. And we believe this is, at the end of the day, is going to bolster the property values, especially for some of those homes on the lower end. I mean, Farmington Hills is such a desirable community to live in. It's very hard to find housing here. So we know that these are going to sell fast and absolutely increase the property values for Westgate, Holly Hill Farms, and other communities adjacent to our proposed development. These were some questions from the mayor's office that we received this morning. So I wanted to provide a quick update on some of these points. We are projecting that the value of the development to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about twenty-seven to twenty-eight million dollars once completed. We're assuming probably about two hundred new residents to come as part of this development. Because again, the Tabernacles for one to two residences, residents per household. And the townhouses, on the low end, one. On the high end, maybe three and a half. So two hundred, I think, is a good number, plus or minus, new residents or existing residents moving into this development. Regarding price points, the Tabernacle Ranch units are projected to start in the two-thousand-plus range. And I can tell you that is well within market rates. We actually have a similar fifty-five-plus ranch community, ranch rental community in Canton Township. And we're seeing rents eclipse that mid-two-thousand range now. So this is a very hot commodity, this style of housing. Because again, it's very hard to, you know, me as a young person, to afford that down payment and even young families as well. So some people are choosing to rent a little longer and then, you know, save some money to eventually go into homeownership. And the nice thing, being a ranch, it's not a typical apartment where you've got people above you and below you. You've got a neighbor to the side and to the side. Truly a single-family home for rent. Regarding Mulberry Park, again, we're looking for the townhouses to start in the four-hundred thousands before any add-ons or additions. Last thing I want to talk about is the burden to public service. The Tabernacle is quite different than the existing Baptist Manor facility, which is a combination of dependent living, independent living, and full-on, you know, full-on nursing. So since the Tabernacle is proposed to be a fifty-five and older active adult living community, we do not envision any additional burden to the fire department or public services above and beyond that of a traditional residential community. Because again, these are folks fifty-five, slightly older. And, you know, should, you know, they age in place and their health become a concern, there's an opportunity for them to move into the existing Baptist Manor facility. Regarding taxable value, I had the chance to speak with the assessor's office this morning. I still have to confirm these numbers, but I'm pretty sure they're about ninety-five percent correct. We're envisioning taxable value in the six-hundred-twenty-thousand range for the entire development on an annual basis. And the city receives roughly thirty percent of those total taxes. Some goes to schools, other operational parts of the city. So roughly about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars makes its way to the city in the form of taxable revenue. Last thing I want to talk about is the existing condition of the houses on the property. As you can see, the houses are clearly blighted, obsolete, inhabitable in their current condition. And as part of our proposed development, numerous structures, such as any fuel oil tanks, abandoned vehicles, abandoned trucks. There's an underground pool on one of these properties. And there's a dilapidated barn structure that is on the southern property line that's really unsightly to the Holly Hill Farms residents. We're looking to get rid of all of that as part of this development. So rest assured, all this junk will be gone should we receive a positive approval tonight. I want to thank you for the time this evening and I will open the floor up to any questions or comments you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. So counsel, do you want to ask any questions of Mr. Schaefer at this time? Or would, or I can open the public hearing. Mr. Aldrich, you would like to ask a question.
I'd like to ask one question. I'm sure there'll be other comments with regards to merits. But there was one factual question I just wanted to pick up on with regards to traffic study. You mentioned, because you mentioned there was, there was a minor comment regarding that. From my understanding of it, in the traffic study that was part of the November twenty-first review, Table seven gives the, gives the status of what the traffic condition would be at that junction in the future, i.e. 2028, looking at the junction from a Westgate point of view and from the new development. And it rates the experience, if you like, of the, of the, of the traffic to a level of service where it's graded A to F, where A through D is acceptable. The current situation at Westgate is a C grade for level of service. And it's projected, as a result of this development, to be an F. So I'm a little unclear why you summarize that as being a minor comment. And the waiting time goes up over a factor of three for the Westgate residents. So I, you know, again, from a factual point of view, I just wanted to pick up. Maybe you could just clarify why that's not a major issue.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, you know, we've, we've really looked at this item, you know, tenfold with fire and engineering. And, you know, we've, we've done our best. I mean, we understand that the level of service is what it is and we want to do our best to try to make it as easy as possible for tenants and future residents to get into this community. So again, you know, increasing that size of the boulevard. We've also looked at increasing the ingress and egress access points. We are providing enough right-of-way so should Thirteen Mile undergo any type of improvements, we have allocated that right-of-way to the City of Farmington Hills. And I know at one point, and this was something, we had conversations with Westgate, there was at one point, it was either an ingress or an egress taper lane that disappeared, probably due to some type of, you know, expansion or additions to Thirteen Mile. I mean, we're willing to roll up our sleeves and get creative. And if, you know, engineering does have any suggestions. But at the end of the day, we had numerous site plans and I'll actually show you some of those plans here. We were showing two entrances along Thirteen Mile. And it just became our collective belief, why do we need more entrances along Thirteen Mile? Why do we need more, you know, especially where, 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 I'm sorry, Baptist Manor's development, the Tabernacle is, that's so close already to the existing traffic light there. We really just came to the conclusion, and this was something that, that fire and engineering did support, that this boulevard is really the path of least resistance. So if there's any creative recommendations that council has, we're all yours.
I'm, I'm not coming with a solution. I'm just telling you, it's not a minor issue from a, from a level of safe, level of service point of view. So that, that, just a factual point. I just wanted to point out that was the, that was the result of the traffic survey.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're ready to open the public hearing?
I can wait till, I have questions, but I'll wait till after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think we all do. But thank you very much for that. Okay, so as I prepare to open the public hearing, I'll do that now. Would like to, let me tell you who's going to be up first and second. So trying to find a way to fairly call you up. We sorted, based on alphabetical order of the street you live on. So the first one that'll be coming up is Emilio Ramirez, to be followed by Julie, I think it's Skeen. Can't read the writing. And as you're, the two of you are coming up, would like to note that we have received comments in opposition from the following. Adele Letterman, Beverly Mahalco, Charles Speis, Craig LaPointe, David and Wanda Whalen, Doug Graham, Douglas and Mamie Roberson, Dr. Sharon Lee Havas, Dwayne Pitcher, Alina Mateva, and Tim Pike, Emilio Ramirez, Holly Hill Farms subdivision, Farida Attar, Guido and Eileen Campania, H. Nellens, Harold Howard, Jay Messner, Farida Attar, Guido and Eileen Campania, H. Nellens, Harold Howard, Jay Messner, Joe and Kathy Sterbling, John Nagoda, Kim and Jerial Hurd, Larry Rosenstock, Lindsay Matich, Mice Moran, Mark Sanders, Michelle Nagoda, Nicole Carroll, Patricia LeBrecq, Paul Schultz, Renee Angari Chafin, Roger Metus, Roman Gold Shaiton, I apologize for mispronunciation of your names, folks, Ron Brining, Rory McHarg, Ursula Kizzy, Valerie Watson, and Dr. Mital Yuralshah Ali. And so with that, Emilio Ramirez, please, to be followed by Julie Skeen.
Hi there.
Hi.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
One more thing before you start. Okay, so folks, here's how public hearings go. The person speaking has three minutes. We don't interrupt, we don't engage. This is just your opportunity to share your point of view with counsel. So even if you were to ask us questions, we don't engage at this point in time. But we will take into consideration what you say, so that then when we ask our questions of the proponent, we'll be able to take that into consideration. Okey-dokey?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I am here again. I was here last year when we were, Holly Hills was fighting this Caldian, you know, the apartment buildings that were being developed. And when I'm here now, and it's a little bit different. Obviously, you guys just heard from Aaron Schaefer with the Schaefer Development. They have been pretty communicative with us, and we've met with them every step of the way. And I have definitely brought up to them that they are nine to 10 residents in Holly Hill Farms that are going to be directly affected. There are more probably now, or maybe just one more with the Baptist Manor, or two. And they still are affected. And I think that I just wanted to come up here just to say, give them voice if they don't have it tonight. These homeowners have the problem with the development for the following reasons. Loss of privacy, possible drainage issues, construction noise, possible decrease of home value, possible negative impact of power grid, loss of wildlife habitat, deforestation of over 400 trees, including 57 landmark trees, and increased traffic congestion at 13 Mile. This is all I have for you guys tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Julie Skeen, to be followed by Amy Broglan Peterson. Good evening.
Hi, Julie Skeen, from High Meadow and Holly Hill Farms. I'm an ex Oakland County employee, worked in the Department of Economic Development and Community Affairs, and actually have a degree in landscape architecture. And so there are a number of things that I find concerning about this. If Baptist Manor is working in conjunction with this other group, then why have they determined that they're going to have single-family only, or I should say, single-story, excuse me, only in the Tabernacle area and have them completely separated? Why did they not decide to have single-story all the way across the back of the development and put all the multi-story farther forward? That's one of my concerns. Second, the price range. I'm not really seeing how, even though they're saying this is comparable, it really doesn't seem affordable to me as a senior citizen. And then the third point is the fact that the entryway is completely opposite the Westgate subdivision entryway. And there's been no discussion of perhaps putting in a traffic light to assist with the people in Westgate being able to make their left-hand turns out of the sub or make a left-hand turn into their sub. They already have severe issues getting in and out. And yet there's been no talk of potentially assisting with putting in a traffic light. So those are my basic concerns without repeating things other people have already said. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy Broglan Peterson, to be followed by Michael Menlo.
Good evening, Amy Broglan Peterson, Westgate subdivision. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate having a voice. I would like to just say a few comments. Last year, when we went through this initial proposal, it was peppered with a lot of things that our communities, joint communities, were unhappy about. The Planning Commission did a very diligent job, I feel. They asked a lot of questions, they listened to our concerns, they wanted to know more from the developers, they asked for, you know, different things to be changed. I was very shocked and disheartened at the lack of discussion or interest of any form by the Planning Commission in moving this proposal forward this time around. It seemed as if there was actually no discourse at all, and it was approved outright to move on to you folks. So we stand here as your constituents, now as elected officials, okay? And we put you in place to represent us. And we're asking you and employing you to please hear our voices. We do not want this in our neighborhoods. This does not bring us value as your residents, and we elected you. So please hear us, think about all the things we say. I almost got T-boned again, trying to turn left out of my neighborhood by a 20-year-old driving up the left-hand turn lane up a hill where they can't see us trying to pull out in the thick of traffic. It is not safe, it does not add value to Farmington Hills. Please consider what your constituents are asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Menlo, to be followed by John Nagoda.
Hello, council members. I'm Michael Menlo, and I live in the Wood Creek subdivision for over 20 years, and prior to that, 10 years in Holly Hills. Kind of, regardless of whether this moves forward, or I should say, if it moves forward, I think, as other people have said, it will be critically important, if it does move forward, to install flare lanes, a traffic light at Westbrook. I have friends who live there, and I know the traffic situation. The other thing to consider is construction. What you guys approved, and we worked with you on the 13 and Inkster development, Robertson Home Development, that was approved probably seven years ago. They clear-cut immediately and didn't start building for five years. And they did start building, and all of Wellington is beat up from where their trucks have been and parked. I've come to the city, there's been nothing done. Our road, that road is so beat. I think you need to take in consideration, if this does move forward, how you're going to address those issues. And I think that's very important for safety and for the well-being of our roads and traffic in general. So thank you for hearing me.
John Nagoda, to be followed by Adele Letterman.
Mayor, counsel, good evening. I'm John Nagoda. My wife and I have been taxpayers and residents of Westgate, Farmington Hills, for 42 years. I strongly recommend that the Planning Commission and its city council deny the PUD request for the following reasons. We chose to settle in this community because of its natural beauty and large residential lots. The proposed project will dramatically reduce the natural beauty of our community. These lots need to be zoned, and were zoned RA1 for a reason. Proposed project provides little or no benefits to the existing community. Most immature trees will be cut down, and 57 enormous landmark trees that are on those properties will also be cut down. They will be replaced with brick, mortar, and asphalt, none of which absorbs water. Furthermore, more trees will be removed than those that will be replaced. This PUD request will allow for a considerable increase in density, not acceptable. The issue here is density, safety, density. An increased burden would be placed upon our police, fire, first responders, electric grid, water, sewer, refuse collection, education, and more. Traffic issues will be compounded. Turning in either direction onto 13 Mile Road presently is a major and considerable challenge. Creating an entrance and exit directly across from Westgate will only compound these problems. Recently, I was nearly hit head-on, waiting to make a left-hand turn into my subdivision by a driver passing a vehicle who was making a right-hand turn. In other words, they use the left-hand lane as a passing lane. This has happened to more of our neighbors over the last three or four years than we can even imagine. All right, I strongly recommend that the PUD be denied. Properties in question must remain RA1, single-family residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Adele Letterman, to be followed by Mark Sanders.
Hello, my name is Adele Letterman. Thank you for listening to me. I am from Westgate subdivision. In 2023, we were all here for the Caldian Community Foundation with their 100-unit apartments. And thankfully, that was shot down, and we're not here. One year later, we're here again with this proposal. This land must be very valuable, it must be very sought out. The current PUD, they want to have 76 units on 12.5 acres, 36 ranch units, and 40 two-story townhomes. I live in the subdivision across the street. We have 75 homes on 30, I have 3/4 of an acre. That's a lot of land. But they want 76 units on 12.5 acres with a boulevard, driveways, patios. I don't see how that congested space can be beautiful for my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Sanders, to be followed by Louise Lieberman.
Good evening. My name is Mark Sanders. I am the Westgate HOA president. I live on Southbrook Street, which is the street just north of 13 Mile. Sorry, my house faces 13 Mile. I get to look at these vacant lots now every day. I work from home. In general, our whole feeling for this proposal is it's too big of a change. There are RA1 lots all around this 12-acre proposal, except for Baptist Manor. The property just east of the proposal is a two-acre lot with one house on it. The next property is a two-acre lot with one house on it. In fact, all three of the Mulberry lots are two-acre lots that used to have one house on them that are now, as we've seen, very dilapidated. Really, the concern is the congestion. The density, as many people have already said, is going to go up greatly. We currently have, like Adele said, a little over an acre per home. Holly Hills is about 3/4 of an acre per home. And this proposal is six homes per acre. It is going to increase the number of people greatly. And it will be a very large change for the existing residents. And then I do want to commend the Schaefer guys for the work they've done with us. They have been very open. They've been, they talked to us a lot, they came to our HOA meetings. They've been great to, sorry, to work with. It's just, there's too much going in in these 12 acres. Thank you.
Thank you. Louise Lieberman, to be followed by Mike Pucher.
I live in Westgate, and many points that I care about have already been discussed, including traffic. And the density, that's my main concern. However, I have heard nothing about, I've heard about loss of animal habitat, but I haven't heard about what's going to happen to the animals who are dislodged. And some of those are vermin. And I would like to see some kind of program to do something with rodents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Pucher, to be followed by Debbie Isner. Good evening.
Hi, Mike Pucher. I live on Southbrook Street in Westgate subdivision. Just to reiterate basically what everybody else is saying, the density in that area is far too great for 12 acres. As this council has recently just approved the project up at 12 Mile and Inkster, the same amount of buildings, 76 acre units on 36 acres. Here, they want to put 76 units on 12 acres, way too much density there. And as everybody's expressed, our neighborhood is a historic, old historic custom home neighborhood, and we're concerned about the values in there with some kind of development like this. The other major concern is the traffic. As everybody has said, we've all almost been T-boned in that area. People pass you in the left lane constantly while you're trying to turn right, you're trying to turn left, people are honking and flying by you. I just am afraid of what all this kind of density is going to bring to the area. And as one of my colleagues mentioned, the traffic light, at the very least, would be beneficial for us for that area. So with all that being said, thank you for taking my time, and hopefully you vote for the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Isner, to be followed by Lindsay Matich.
Hi, I'm Debbie Isner. I live on Woodbrook. Our property backs directly up to the Mulberry Park proposed development. I understand that the city's master plan changed the land use on these lots to accommodate flex residential. And it is vital that we seize this opportunity to capture the tree conservation area into perpetuity. And for anyone that has reservations about this proposed development, know that these plans are going to be submitted to the city of Farmington Hills in writing. And if anyone would like changes to the proposed trees, Schaefer Development will meet with them at City Hall and put those changes in writing. Schaefer Development has been very communicative. They have met with me, my other neighbors on the vacant land. They've met with us in our personal backyard, as well as in their office. They've allowed me to make changes to the proposed trees. And the Schaefers have offered to plant trees in our personal backyard. And it was my decision also to remove dead tree branches, unhealthy, and fallen trees. So just please keep in mind that Schaefer Development continues to have an open-door policy. Thank you.
Lindsay Matich, to be followed by Eric Schmidt. Good evening.
I am a resident of Holly Hill Farms and live directly adjacent to the site of the 13 Mile PUD application. I strongly oppose the proposal due to the extreme removal of trees and high density of the plan. I also have major concerns about this application's impact on drainage, traffic, the existing wildlife habitat, marketability, and the loss of privacy for the adjacent properties. According to the accompanying report, this proposal most aligns with city objectives 1, 3, 7, and 8 due to allegedly preserving open space along the southern perimeter. This setback to the edge of the proposed patios is a mere 67 feet from the property line. This exceeds the minimum requirement of 35 feet by just 32 feet. The entire width of the lot is about 510 feet, which means the extra 32 feet beyond the minimum equates to just 6%. It should also be noted that many of the trees in this leftover margin of land are slated for removal and will not be preserved. The false claim that this plan aims to preserve open space is completely outlandish. It will destroy open space by filling the remaining 94% with as many units as possible and cutting down over 400 trees. This alleged open space is not an integral part of the design and appears to be a leftover patch that was not wide enough for another row of additional units. If this is the only portion that aligns with the city objectives, then this is not worth all of the problems it will create. Per the 2024 Master Plan's recommendation for the area, increases in density should be tied to deep buffering from the neighborhood to the south, including preservation of the natural vegetation to the greatest extent possible. This plan appears to contradict the vision of the master plan. A surge in density higher than the reasonable capacity of the area and the removal of over 400 trees, including close to 60 landmark trees, is the exact opposite of the master plan. In response to city objective 8, this proposal does not bring change that is desirable for myself or any of my neighbors. For me and my neighbors on Woodbrook Street, the approval of this plan will result in drainage problems and the complete loss of privacy. For my neighbors in Westgate, they will no longer be able to exit their neighborhood in a timely or safe manner. For my neighbors on 13 Mile, natural landscapes will be replaced by overcrowded buildings. For my neighbors in Cove Creek, a serene, low-density condo complex will be overshadowed by massive townhomes. As one of the many residents of this natural northeast corridor of Farmington Hills, please find a better way to develop these lots. This location has been one of the most sought-after areas of our cities since the construction of our homes and neighborhoods in the 50s and 60s. More than half of a century later, the picturesque landscapes and historic homes continue to draw people to this area. Any new development should preserve the history and the trees. It should align with at least one of the city objectives of Farmington Hills, and it should follow the guidance of the master plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eric Schmidt, to be followed by Angie Smith.
Good evening, Happy New Year. Thanks for hearing us out today. I'm new to Holly Hill Farms. I live at the most northwest corner of Woodbrook, of Holly Hill Farms, which means I am right next to Baptist Manor and directly behind this proposed development. I just moved in, and when we were selecting a home, it was between this house and another residence also in Farmington Hills nearby. We specifically chose this residence because of the landscape that was around us. While we were there, deer were walking in the front yard, birds were singing, and we recognized that this is what we wanted to raise with our family. It's my girlfriend, three kids, well, depending on the day, zero to three, a dog and a cat. And this type of atmosphere is exactly what we were looking for. If we had known that this was a proposed development, we would have chosen the other residence. So when we talk about loss of property value, that's the type of thing that we're discussing here. In addition, the green spaces must be a pretty broad term, because I don't see how this particular development does anything to preserve green spaces. What I see here is an opportunity to maximize profits for developers. I would much rather see a development that incorporates nature into the design instead of destroying it to develop something that, at the bare minimum, they can't even replace what they are taking out. If they can't replace what they're taking out, then this is probably not the right option for the city at this time. There are much better options, specifically when you look at Holly Hill Farms and Westgate communities. We have homes that are designated as historical landmarks. We have homes that are eligible for those designations. And creating something that you can find literally anywhere else in the United States is not exactly cohesive with the current environment that we have. Something creative, something that incorporates nature into this environment, I think would be much more palatable for the community and at least would be much more palatable for myself. I will give credit to the Schaefers for coming over to my house. We did have a nice conversation. I did feel respected, I did feel like it was a professional conversation. But at the end of it, they did fail to convince me that this was going to provide any benefit for me, my neighborhood, let alone for the city. I hope that this is taken into consideration when thinking about this. I believe Mr. Aldrich laid it out clearer than anybody else could today. That intersection is going to go down to an F. So in addition to the pure aesthetics, the nature that we'll be losing, but more importantly, the safety of the residents in this specific area, I don't see any specific reason why this should continue as proposed. At a minimum, I don't know of anybody here that is actually supporting this other than people that are going to be having cash put into their pockets. I hope that this means something to the residents today and to the board and to the city council. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Angie Smith, to be followed by Robin W. White. Good evening.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Thank you to the Schaefer Project for being very transparent. They couldn't have been more transparent. But my concern is, and I want to thank Councilman Aldrich for your comments. You made some very good, valid comments, and I appreciate that. We have to also remember, as many of your community members have spoken, that intersection, if you're in a rush and you don't know where to turn, you can be hit from behind, or as people have stated, you can be hit, you know, somebody getting ready to make a left-hand turn or what have you. But the project is beautiful. But at the end of the day, I heard from the gentleman, and as my grandfather used to say, every goodbye ain't gone. I'm 62 years old, and I'm not an empty nester. Mine just moved back home. So at the end of the day, and I don't know how long she's going to be there. And I'm not complaining, but at the end of the day, when you say 55, and that ain't old, that ain't no senior citizen. At 55- At fifty-five, you may have younger children coming back home that went away to college. You may have an uncle or a cousin. I mean, I've had relatives when I go visit in senior buildings, and I'm like, well, what are you doing here? Well, I had to move here, you know. You got to keep that in mind. And so what are we doing, saying fifty-five and older? So are we going to knock on these people's doors and say, you can't live here? Those are things that we have to take into consideration. It is a buyer's market, not a seller's market. My daughter was a renter in Detroit, and the rent went up. So now I am a proud grandmother of four kittens and a lizard. So at the end of the day, you know, we have to think of, you know, you say fifty-five, and fifty-five is not old. It may be to the young man that was behind us, but that gave the report. But we have to think of that and think of our community and think of the cost. I pay two homeowners' association fees, and I'm in a gated community, and it's not easy. So let's have more discussion, and I appreciate you all being so transparent and having everyone have this opportunity to speak and not just go through and do this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin W. White.
Hi, thank you. My name is Robin White, and I've been a resident of Farmington Hills for about sixty-two years. My biggest concern is the traffic. I live at Fourteen Mile and Middle Belt, and as you know, the roundabout that's at Fourteen Mile and Orchard Lake is, got a lot of seniors that do not know how to round it, okay? They literally stop. Trying to get into Baptist Manor, okay? I have a family member that lives there. I think the expansion is well-needed. We need senior living and housing. I think the Manor has done a great job at proposing this, but the roads have to be widened first. You can't put the cart before the horse here. You travel there between four-thirty, even four o'clock, and five-thirty, you can wait twenty-five minutes to get to that light that enters into the Baptist Manor. There's businesses along there. I tried to get into my dentist's office, okay? Took me thirty-seven minutes to be able to turn left. They have signs that say, do not block intersection or do not block driveway. There is a synagogue that has an exit there, okay? High holidays, the police work triple time to get traffic to go in and out of there, okay? The signage has to be changed to say either no left turns during a certain hour, like they did on Northwestern into our subdivision. But the traffic is the number-one concern because it is a safety feature. I think that the Manor should expand. I don't know about these townhouses for fifty-five and up. I don't know who's going to afford five-hundred thousand, four-hundred thousand, okay? The trees that they're going to tear out and replace, is there a warranty on these trees? Are they going to maintain them two years later when they die? Or are the residents or the Manor going to have to consume that cost? I think there has to be a way that the Baptist Manor can expand, but as they have a driveway that's in front of their building that faces Thirteen Mile to get to the other exit, okay? That they could put some type of easement or whatever to carry that drive over, okay? Because there's no way you're going to get out onto Thirteen Mile if there is a boulevard or entrance or exit across from Westgate. It's impossible. You pull into the center lane. I was T-boned at Maple and between Middle Belt and Orchard Lake, doing the same thing. I pulled out. You inch out a little bit, hoping that that traffic's going to stop coming the other way. You inch out a little bit more, and I pulled out, and the people that were coming eastbound decided that they weren't going to stop. And she hit me, totaled out my car. And the bottom line there was, okay, they told me, the West Boone Police Department told me, when you want to exit, go to where the light is, okay? Which I now do. So please really look at the traffic concerns and really give the Manor an option at expanding because it's really needed for the seniors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our public hearing. We have no further cards, no one wishing to speak, so the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, questions? Yes, Ms. Knoll, and then Dr. Bruce.
Yeah, I have a variety of questions here for the, I guess, for the developer. Some of them are more my comments, which I guess I'm just going to make here at the same time I ask questions, just for sake of time, because we have a lot to get through here tonight. So I'm just going to tell you my concerns, and while I'm telling you my concerns, there may be some questions in there for you to answer, too. So my first concern really has to do with the compatibility of the proposal, and, or I should say, the lack of compatibility. One of my big concerns is Holly Hill Farms to the south. Those are lower mid-century modern homes. So many of them are tri-levels. They are not tall colonials, two stories. And so I am concerned with having those two-story townhouses fairly close to them. I realize there's a buffer, but you are going to see them, especially because it's going to take many years for these trees to mature. So that is a concern. Speaking of also density, of course, it was brought up that Westgate has seventy-five homes. That's basically the same number, similar number you're proposing, but obviously, one-acre lots, Holly Hill, large lots as well, large lots to the east. So again, I have an issue with compatibility. Even if you continue to the east where there's condos, the Cove Creek, that is a cluster, one, RA1 cluster. So that even has less density as a condo association than this proposal would have. Someone did their homework and mentioned it tonight, because I actually brought with me here this project summary that the council recently approved for the villas at Pebble Creek, which is going to be on Inkster on Twelve Mile. And we've worked on this project for many years. This is Sarah Fisher's site. This project came before us numerous times, and we continued to work with the developer to reduce the density, which we did, to a number of seventy-five condos. It started as townhouses. It started as apartments, then went to townhouses, then finally went to condos, owner, more owner-occupied, now condos. And that is, as mentioned tonight, thirty acres with seventy-five. So again, similar number of units, but on seventy-five acres. And these are also one and one-point-five stories, which is great for families, but also for seniors that really don't want to do stairs. And that's a need that that developer, Robertson Brothers, said was needed in this community, specifically because we have a lot of senior, or people, I'm not going to call them seniors, sorry. There are people in their fifties whose children have grown, or sixties, whose children have grown, and they want to downsize. They don't want to go into an apartment, but they're thinking of their future when they're eighty, and they don't want to do stairs, so they like these options of the one, one-point-five-story homes. So I guess I talked about privacy. I talk about lack of compatibility and too much density, and those are some of the reasons why I just can't support it in its current fashion. You know, the other thing is the tabernacle. You are proposing a hundred-and-eight units, or sorry, rooms. That's not units. And what's allowed in an RC1 is one-thirty-eight. So you actually do meet the requirements for the RC1 in the tabernacle unit, or portion. But in the Mulberry Park, where you're proposing to do the two stories, the RC1 is one-thirty-seven rooms, whereas you have one-sixty provided. So that's even above the RC1, which again, is more than the RA1. And I did notice that if you were to take the two-story condos that back up to Holly Hill Farms, so that's the southern portion, if you actually turn those into one-story condos, instead of the two-story townhouses, you would reduce your room number by one per unit, but you would come up with the exact difference of twenty-three, which is what you are over for number of rooms between, again, what you're over the RC1. So, yeah, I guess my question is, to you is, you know, what could you reduce the density in there, either by going into, going to one-story condos? I'd love it if you do one-story condos in the entire Mulberry instead of the two-story. But certainly, for sure, at least in the back where you're bordering up to the Holly Hill Farms, because again, those are lower mid-century homes, and they're not going to have the privacy of the trees for many, many, many years as they, you know, when you plant them, they're probably going to be, I don't know, eight, ten-feet trees, maybe a little taller, but, yeah. So leave it at that. I'm sure other council members want to speak as well.
All right, Councilwoman Knoll, thank you so much. I just jotted down some notes. Really, I'm going to try to go through these as quick as I can, but also answer them to the best of my knowledge. Compatibility of proposal, density, privacy, and RC1. So I'll kind of maybe go backwards. Regarding RC1, in totality, on the twelve-point-oh-four acres, we're actually seven units short of the RC1 number. So when you combine both these developments together, we're less than that permitted unit count in RC1. In regards to privacy, I mean, again, we've got the opportunity to plant four-hundred-and-eighty-five trees, and we have reached out to neighbors off-site. I mean, you can see by this plan right in front of you, we've done our best to shoehorn as many units as we can to get creative and also offer fir trees and larger trees that are going to have foliage all four seasons. So by way of privacy, that's, you know, one of the considerations we have made, and that's definitely an added cost, but we, you know, are absolutely, absolutely willing to do it in order to, you know, be a good neighbor and a good corporate citizen. In regards to density, that is something that we can take a look at. And compatibility of the proposal, I mean, in the, you know, forgive me if I'm repeating myself, but in the city's master plan, since 2009, these properties along Thirteen Mile, I think everybody understands they're a little different than maybe what they were twenty, thirty, forty years ago. I mean, people my age, people a little older, it's hard to afford a traditional single-family home. People my age don't want to deal with all the crap, the snow plowing, the landscaping, my hot water heater went out, now I got to spend two-thousand dollars trying to find, you know, a plumber last minute. So, you know, these are really where we're starting to see development trends push, especially because it is so expensive to develop a property. I mean, the fact we've got a one-loaded street along Thirteen Mile frontage, we were lucky enough to get units on each side. You know, I mean, a hundred units is what was being proposed here. That got denied as a subsidized apartment development. And I know many folks on this body were in approval of that because it brings much-needed, attainable, missing-middle housing into the community. And we're looking to address that with this point. Regarding the Fifty-Five and Older, that is Fair Housing Act. So, I mean, I'm only a twenty-seven-year-old, so listen, I get it. You know, my dad's sixty-seven, and I still consider him, you know, sprightly and young, but that is Fair Housing Act requirements. Twenty percent of people can be slightly under fifty-five. There is some leeway in that FHA principle, but, I mean, from a hundred units down to fifty-four units, down to forty units, just on the Mulberry Park development. I mean, to try to peel away any more units, there's certain economics on this property, and we've done the best to, you know, balance it. The property's worth X. We have to get this many units in order for it to make sense, and we've really met with the neighbors, and I think a lot of people are appreciative, but I'm going to have my brother Spencer hone in real quickly.
Good evening, Planning Commissioner Spencer Schaefer. I'll be quick. One of the biggest things I wanted to talk about was compatibility. Now, as we look at the master plan for this parcel, it does allow, it allows up to one-to-three-story units. So we cognizantly made the effort to transition down to a two-story product for half the development to try to propose a building height that really is more in line with some of those existing ranches and colonials in Holly Hills. In terms of our setback, we far exceed what is required for a PUD setback. We well exceed what is R1A, which was spoken about in the review letter, which if this property was developed as conventional single-family, would only require a thirty-five-foot setback. With our PUD, I believe we exceed that by at least ten to twenty feet, our rear yard setback, so we feel like that's one key added benefit. And there is a lot of existing vegetation. We had it on an earlier slide. That red line shows the existing tree canopy on that south end. So you can see, we've made an effort to preserve a large majority of that tree canopy, and where there are gaps, you know, we're filling out those gaps. So we think that helps with the privacy element in terms of compatibility. What we're proposing, it's not in line with the current zoning, but is in direct alignment with what is allowed under the master plan. So we appreciate your time on that, and we'll try to field questions and answer to the best of our abilities.
Dr. Bruce, and then Mr. Aldrich.
Got a question for our planning consultant again. If I could have you just, what I'd like to do is just, first off, for a PUD, what would you say are the main purposes of a PUD?
Well, the ordinance gives us eight standards that we can look to, but in broader terms, what we're using the PUD for is to allow projects to go forward that may not fit under our current zoning standards the way they are, and that there really isn't another zoning category that fits for that kind of a project.
So these properties that are there, they're all RA1 properties, correct? I tend to look at the PUD processes addressing problematic properties, properties that, for whatever reason, can't typically be developed for what they are. Maybe combining lots together as a package to put in a development that makes sense for that area. So, good, that's all I wanted to ask you. Thank you very much. So my issue with this is I don't even know or think that maybe a PUD is appropriate for this, because I've not seen any evidence that these lots can't be sold and developed for exactly what they are, which is RA1. And so I think that's the number-one issue I have, is that I just don't think a PUD is appropriate as a planning tool here for these properties. This is a lot of units. It's a lot of units. I think somebody mentioned shoehorning in this property, and I agree with that. There's a lot of units and people being shoehorned into this piece of property or on these pieces of property. When I look at zoning, I've always said, my number-one goal is to protect the residential character of our neighborhoods. And we have zoning for a reason. And I don't like seeing high density bleed into low density, because it changes the whole character of the neighborhood. When you buy a piece of property and it's zoned a certain way next to you, you expect that property to be zoned or to be developed in that particular way. The one gentleman that testified earlier, how he just recently moved into the property, again, expecting that these lots were probably going to stay what they're zoned as. When you buy into that, and then all of a sudden, the zoning changes for those lots, it's kind of like changing the rules of the game halfway through, in that, wait a minute, I thought I was living next to RA1, and now all of a sudden, we're going to have RC1 or whatever it is. And I don't think that's very fair to people to do that. So I have a concern about how we're taking this lower density and putting in a pretty high-level density development. So that's a huge concern of mine. And it's not our concern about making sure a property owner gets the highest return on investment on their property. That's not our job to do that. Our job is to make sure that properties are developed in a rational, reasonable way, taking into account zoning. And I've been doing this for almost thirty years, working in development in this city in one form or another. And I've seen bad development go in, and bad development is forever. You know, sometimes no development is better than bad development. And these are, I can tell you, you can sell almost anything in Farmington Hills. And so I've always had a concern as to why these properties never sold. And I have my own ideas about why they've never sold and why these homes were left to deteriorate the way that they have been. But I think that these properties could sell and be developed as RA1, and I've not seen any evidence to the contrary on that. any evidence to the contrary on that. Have they sat there for a while? Yeah, they have, but that doesn't mean we jump at something and try to put, you know, again, shoehorn all these properties in. It's a nice development, I'll give the developers that, it's a beautiful-looking development. I don't have any problem with the way the development looks, the ideas behind it, all of that, but I don't think this is the place for this development. I'm very concerned about the amount of traffic. I mean, you've got 200 new residents in this piece of property. That's a lot of new traffic, as we've heard, and I agree, coming in and out of that development, being on the road in that area, that's substantial. You're going to have a lot of trips in and out of this development with the people that live there, their family, their friends, whomever it is, that's going to be a lot of trips. So, while I think it's a, it's a pretty development, I think it would be prettier somewhere else and not on 13 Mile, and I don't see any reason why we can't have those properties developed as RA1. I don't see the benefit from a PUD to the community for this. I see a benefit to the developer, and I don't give the developer any problem with trying to develop their, their land or whatever to make a profit. I'm in business, I know what it is to make a profit, that's very important, I don't have any problem with that. But my role is to protect the city and the neighborhoods here in terms of putting in good development versus bad development. So, at this point, I just don't see this being something I could support, and thank you.
Yes, I saw Mr. Aldrich, and then Mr. Bridges, and then Ms. Bollier.
Okay. Mr. Schaefer, no, thank you, you're done, thank you, thank you. So, yes, so I want to recognize the fact that this has, in the master plan was called out as being flex residential, and I know that's where you're coming from on this, but I do think that flex residential doesn't mean RC1. I don't think we mean that we have to go to that extent of density, just because what it says is that we, we're looking at, you know, having more flexibility, but I don't think it means going as, we didn't rezone RC1, right? We, we said, let's have a bit more flexibility here, so I have a similar issue that I think the density is just too far. I think we want three things out of this, right? We want a, we want to have minimal impact on the neighborhood to the south, we want to have acceptable traffic, impact on the traffic and, and safe traffic, and we want to have a high-quality product as a result in terms of the housing. I don't think we've achieved minimal impact, I don't think that 60 feet is enough personally, I don't think it truly provides open space, as the PUD says, I don't think it's personally big enough. Traffic impact, I've already said, I think it's got an F grade from a level of service. And from a product point of view, I agree, I think the designs look great, nicely done, good proposal. There's no walkability, from what I can see, there are no sidewalks, correct? There's one path down the middle, one path down the middle. There's no, there's no walkability, something that was raised at previous commission meeting was there should be a walking connection into Baptist Manor, if you're going to do this, to encourage people to walk and get outside. I think it's, walkability is something we hear from our residents, want people to be able to get outside and, and, and have sidewalks and walk, and there aren't any. And I think the reason for that is because of the density, you can't fit sidewalks as it's, as it's currently designed. So, as was mentioned, the Cove Creek condo development, which is just down the road at 13 and Middle Belt, that has a density of 3.1, 3.1 units per acre, and you're at 6.3. 3, that's, you know, I think we want to be, like, in terms of flex, somewhere in that neighborhood, somewhere between 3 and 6, but not 6. That's my, my opinion.
Well, Councilman Aldrich, I really do appreciate all the points, I want to address them, minimum impact to the south, traffic impact, high-quality product, and walkability. In regards to walkability, we really wanted to preserve as, or put as many trees as possible on the development. We can absolutely reevaluate putting in a walking connection that does make its way into Baptist Manor. In regards to sidewalks around the development, too, we can look at that in select areas as well. In regards to traffic impact, we would be open, and I know it's a little bit of an interesting predicament, because 13 Mile is managed by the city of Farmington Hills and not the Road Commission. I don't know what the site distances are per the city of Farmington Hills from the existing Baptist Manor light to, to here, but if that's something that does pass muster, we absolutely would be open to looking at that, but I, I hear you loud and clear on the density concern, so I think bringing that doesn't necessarily qualm your point, but I at least want that to be on the public record, because we are willing to roll our sleeves up and, and get creative here. So, thank you for the comments. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I can address at this point, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges, and then Ms. Bollier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to, consultant, for one more time, please. And could you, the PUD, PUD application process, there's a number of criteria that the proponent has to meet, right? I mean, it's one, it's eight different, eight, eight different items they have to meet?
There are, they don't have to meet all eight.
I know. So, is our process similar to other cities or across, is this a standard process that you see numbered cities, or is it something that the city does itself administratively to determine what those items are?
The process is pretty similar to what other communities do, if they choose to use the Plan Unit Development Tool. That is something that communities are able to do through the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, and that process is, is pretty similar, where an applicant goes before the Planning Commission and really demonstrates what it is about their project that not only benefits the community, helps achieve goals of the master plan, but then where they may struggle with meeting all of the criteria of the zoning ordinance for that particular process.
Okay. And given Farmington Hills is a built city, I mean, it's 99% built, and it's not much open land available, so you, we can expect an increased amount of these PUDs coming to Farmington Hills?
You know, it's a really good question, and I think that we do see that in communities where we have challenging sites to develop. This site has been vacant for several, these sites have been vacant for some time. They were identified in the 2009 master plan as an area of special planning concern that carried forward in our 2024 plan. There's a recognition by the Planning Commission that as we are looking to add housing options in the city, that this may be a good location for that, given their frontage on 13 Mile Road, this could be a place where we would expect to see a Plan Unit Development. Sometimes we say all the easy sites are taken, right? So, we have got the challenging things that are left to work with.
And you mentioned about the, the Enabling Act, zoning enablement, what do you call it?
Yeah, Planning, Michigan Planning, Arizona.
Okay. So, the PUD process criteria is established there, or is it, does the city have any control over determining what's going to be included in that process?
Yes, the city has absolute control over what those, what those criteria are, and those are what you have in your ordinance.
Maybe we want to, down the road, look at, I don't know if it's appropriate right now, look at what we can do to look at that process to see if it's applicable for today. I mean, in regards to our current situation regarding land development in Farmington Hills, I don't know, but that's just a thought.
Well, that is one of the action items that the Planning Commission, I think, is going to look at this year, is kind of a review of that section of the ordinance and see where amendments might be necessary to be more proactive about the kinds of things that we want to see, use this type of tool, make the process clearer and easier to understand, and give the, give the Planning Commission and City Council a little bit more to work with in that regard.
Not just, not just clear to understand, but is it appropriate, is it applicable to today Farmington Hills?
Yes.
That's the issue, okay.
Right.
All right. Mike, I just want to, I don't want to, I want to keep my other comments, we got, I am, I am, I am opposed to this development project. A council member, Bruce, did an excellent job, and others as well, explaining why, because of the fact it is out of character for that particular area. I spent many years on the zoning board of appeals, along with the council member Bruce, where we learned a lot about development in regards to, people move to Farmington Hills for a reason, in regards to open space, trees, and, and this particular area has a lot of large lots. And there, this particular proposal, in my viewpoint, kind of like disturbs that in a way, disturbs that situation, and it kind of like goes across with the character of that area. And, and trying to put in RC1 into RA1, in my viewpoint, is somewhat difficult to, not to see that it's out of character. The density issue is, is a, is a prominent issue that may mitigate that particular point regarding the RC1 and RA1, but the current, the current densities you're offering is, makes that case even more stronger. So, those are my comments about that, and, and I want to also applaud you. You earlier did a great job in, in going through a comprehensive review of what the concerns of residents had about this project, and you went point by point in regards addressing those, those issues. And I want to applaud you for doing that, because a lot of developers don't even, don't do as much as you did, you did a lot. But I think the proposal that you're offering here is, is, has the, my position is somewhat out of character for that particular area, in my viewpoint, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Bridges. You definitely made my father smile saying that comment, so I do appreciate that. Because I don't get my day in court with you folks much often, I'd like to reiterate something that you had mentioned. You know, I'm a land developer, I'm a dirt dog, I look everywhere across the state of Michigan and other markets for property, and it's true, there really is not much open land available in Farmington Hills. So, really, the planned unit development mechanism is the only way to get creative and understanding there are certain missing-middle housing opportunities in the city of Farmington Hills, namely, where do our empty nesters, where do our aging population go? So, I understand loud and clear, density is a major concern, followed by traffic and some other concerns, so I hear you loud and clear.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Bollier.
Yes. I'm not going to belabor the point, because my fellow council members have reiterated a lot of their concerns. I think the project in itself looks great. I know that the Tabernacle proposal could proceed on its own, because I don't think the City Council or anyone else needs to approve that project, because it beats all the criteria for that particular zoned location. It's the other portion, it's the Mulberry, that I think that most, well, that I have the most concerns with. Like the other council members have mentioned, it's the density in that particular location, although I love the idea of multiple, a multi-generational development, where you have 55 and older, and then you have younger families, I think that's perfect. I think the problem that I'm struggling with is the density in the Mulberry portion of the project. And the concern that most, I share the same concerns that most residents share, and it's the traffic. I live not too far from that, I know it's really difficult to navigate 13 Mile, especially in the afternoon hours. I understand that for those who live in the Baptist Manor portion, those are older, older individuals, and you probably won't be out, prob, more than likely during the high-traffic periods, because we, we mainly go out during low-traffic periods. But the, the Mulberry portion is concerning for me. I know you said that, and that's a half of the project, the six acres that I'm speaking of, because the other, the Tabernacle, I think that's a great project in, of itself. It's the other six acres that I have the concern with. And if there was a way that, I know that developers are in the business of, you know, getting the most bang for your money, because that's why you're in the business, I appreciate that. But by the same token, is there any way that the numbers of units could be reduced in that location? I know that the trees there are on private property, correct? Most of the 400 trees. So, those members, those individuals, could cut the trees down now if they really wanted to. But I like the idea that you're replacing, that you're, that you're cutting, I think there's 385 trees that you're going to have to cut down, but you're replacing them with 400 trees, as well as 45 more, 40 trees spread out throughout the development, and then 40 semi-trees banked somewhere for later use. I like that proposal. My primary concern is the density of the six acres, as well as the traffic study. And it appears that many residents who live in Westgate have the most concerns trying to get in and out of that subdivision, and I know that would be a concern to me as well. So, if there's any way that we could reduce the density in that area, and perhaps have a more comprehensive, once that done, have a more comprehensive traffic study about how that development's going to impact the traffic on 13 Mile Road. But I appreciate all your efforts, I, you know, looks great to me, I like the facade of the project, you know, so, with that.
Well, thank you very, thank you very much, Councilwoman Bollier. One thing I, I'd like some clarification on, is, is you said how it's designed for the Tabernacle, the ranches on the left side, that that is in compliance, but Mulberry Park is not.
Yeah, I think the density, yes, the density, yeah.
So, there's just a four-unit difference between the communities, just to...
Yeah, but I think they're, they're zoned differently, if I'm not mistaken.
No, it's all zoned RA1.
Is it our, is, is Baptist Manor, is it our one?
Baptist Manor is a RC1, but that's a...
Oh, okay, Baptist, okay, so, it's, okay, gotcha.
I, I think what you're trying to say is that that could be a, a more prominent traffic generator than the Baptist Manor units. While the density may be comparable, there's obviously more residents in a townhouse structure versus a one-story ranch, so...
Right, right. And I like the, I like the Tabernacle portion of the project, I do. It's just the other portion that I have a concern with.
Understood.
I have some questions regarding.
One quick thing I want to say about traffic, because it was mentioned by a couple of different council members, we did work with Fleeson, Bandenbrink, who's a professional traffic consultant, they actually represent a number of communities in the southeast Michigan area, but I know Julie, who I use exclusively over there, knows your traffic engineer very well. One of the things engineering had asked for was an alignment of our entrances. If we actually didn't directly align our boulevard, it's not going to change the level of service for Westgate that much. The fact that we're changing that from what's currently a three-way intersection to a four-way intersection affects the level of service. So, I think as part of a new proposal, we're going to be prepared to talk about a couple of different options. Obviously, Baptist Manor has an existing traffic signal directly to our west, there's one there on 13 Mile and Middle Belt, Farmington Hills is in control of the traffic signal, so maybe there's some stuff that we can do behind the scenes with the city to help, you know, a mill, to help really better what is a difficult situation. And, you know, there's no doubt this is going to have some impact to it, but if we can anyway help keep that level of service in a similar level at a D rating, I think that would be our objective, maybe two entrances, that was something that we had explored previously, but we didn't investigate as part of our formal traffic analysis. So, I think you're, you're giving us some good comments here, you know, we would like to go back to the drawing board and refine and try to address these comments to the best of our abilities. What, you know, I would like to potentially talk about, you know, I think we know the way that this meeting is going, we'd like to see if this item could maybe be tabled so we can address a lot of the feedback and the commentary that's been shared with us tonight. Obviously, if, if more council members do have feedback, we'd love to hear that, we'd love to solicit that, we'd love to write that down, to see how we could implement that as part of a revised proposal, but, you know, we think that this would be the best pathway to proceed down this point, because I feel like there is some homework, and there is some items that we need to look into and see how we can address them to the best of our abilities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, I'm hearing some rumbling about that, let's make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak, who wants to speak. Mayor Protem, is there anything you wanted to say? Okay, I had a couple of comments, and then let's explore that do-we-table until a date certain. So, first off, I wanted to thank Mr. Schaefer and his father, Mr. Schaefer, for coming to walk the hawk last week, so, did a couple laps with us and talked about your development with some other residents who were there with us. And I really appreciate, first off, your dedication to our community, as well as your dedication to talk to as many residents as you can. Clearly, as you talked, walked through your, your work plan, what you shared with the Planning Commission, you really put a lot of due diligence into this. That said, we've heard a lot from the community of not the people that you talk to coming to show love for the project. So, there are a lot of opportunities, as my fellow council members have stated. The concern about walkability continues. I have a concern about lack of placemaking, lack of, when we talk about community benefit, public benefit, we're a council that's getting pretty close to being on the brink of having a public art ordinance for developers, where there would be public art funding potentially, we've had a couple of meetings talking about that this last year. Would love to see more along those lines. We heard a lot about green space, would love to see more along those lines. We talked about affordability. You know, when, when you say, well, it's going to be $2,500 a month, I think about my mom, who's a widow living on Social Security, of $2,000 a month. a month, I think about my mom, who's a widow living on social security of $2,000 a month. And I don't see, I don't see affordability here. I really don't. Help me on that one, because the, this doesn't pencil. The traffic concerns we've talked about, the last time we talked about this property, or some of these properties with this body, was a year ago. The the houses were in deplorable state then. They've only gotten worse. Should they just be condemned and demolished at this point in time? I don't know. But, but, you know, when we saw those pictures tonight, it's horrifying. And the the risk there. Those are the main concerns. So again, thank you for your continued dedication to our community. I hope you heard that we do appreciate you. We appreciate that. But this isn't ready.
Yep.
So, counsel, I know that we have on page 85 of our 269-page packet for this week. We do have possible council actions for approval or denial, but there would also be the, am I hearing you say you would ask that we table this, we would have to do it to a date certain? So when would you want that to be?
Six weeks if possible. So mid-February, I don't know if there's the latter March meeting. I think that's the fourth week of March.
The fourth week of March? Okay, so that would be the 20-somethings, 20, 25th?
February 10th and February 24th.
No, I think, I thought you said.
March 3rd. March 3rd actually works. I'm sorry, I was.
Okay, March 3rd is our first meeting in March because we just moved that date today. Okay, so is there anyone who would like to make a motion that this be tabled until our meeting of March 3rd?
I would.
Okay, Ms. Bolware?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until March 3rd, 2024, 2025, for additional discussion and approval.
Or denial. Okay, we have a motion, support by the Mayor Protem. This is a regular vote. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign?
No.
Okay, we have one no. So that being said, this does, we are now tabled with this item until March 3rd meeting. And folks, it's been a long night already. Let's take a 15-minute intermission.
We don't need that long.
No, five, five. Good evening. Welcome back. We are now moving on to our next item. We still have a full room in here. Item six, public hearing and consideration of planned unit development one, 2024, including site plan 54-7-2024 Sheets, with carryout drive-through restaurant located at 27815 and 28025 Middle Belt Road. That's our CMR 1-25-03. Hello, Charmaine. It's been ages.
Feels like it. Charmaine Kettler-Schmaltz, Director of Planning and Community Development, to introduce the item. We have before you a PUD request for a fueling station with approximately 12 locations for fueling, a carryout drive-through restaurant on just under four acres comprised of four, sorry, comprised of three parcels at the northwest corner of 12 Mile and Middle Belt. The Planning Commission has, as is standard for PUDs, had three hearings, one for qualification, one for set for public hearing, and one to recommend the plan before you to City Council for the public hearing, which has been notified and publicly noticed, published in the newspaper as is required. We have provided to you in your report minutes from the previous meetings, a summary from our planning consultant. However, we did receive recently a request for postponement. It is staff's recommendation that the public hearing be held. It would be at the council's discretion whether they want to take action on the item this evening. And we're here to answer any questions that you might have. I'm going to let our consultant add any items that are pertinent to the, to the discussion.
Or not.
It's at, it's at the council's discretion whether you want to hear the report. That was included in your packet.
Counsel?
Nope.
No?
We, moving right.
We read all 269 pages of the packet that we received on Friday, so we're ready to go.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, though.
We have the proponent here that may have a comment prior to the public hearing being opened.
They're certainly welcome to come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Pat Lennon. I'm an attorney with the Hunningman Firm. I represent the applicant tonight. As you've heard, a formal request for a postponement has been submitted. We just wanted to to share that with you and let you know that that's an option tonight for you. You know, there are a few reasons for it. There are enhancements over and above the plan that has already been submitted that the applicant's considering. And we also recognize the hour. And so if that's more convenient for this body, then we are by all means willing to answer questions or simply proceed with our presentation. We thought we would offer that opportunity for you before we begin.
Counsel, shall we open the public hearing? Because we noticed it, and we're going to have the public hearing. And so why don't we do that, and then we'll talk?
Sounds great.
Sound okay with you?
Well, with that, I'm going to introduce you to Alex, who will be providing our presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay? All right, sometimes these things are a little funky. My name's Alex Sawicki from Sheets. You can find me at 39300 West 12 Mile Road, right here in Farmington Hills. Bear with me here while I kind of get my bearings. All right, so we will get into a little bit of about Sheets. This is our first time in front of Farmington Hills City Council, so I kind of want to introduce you to who we are and what our brand is. So Sheets was founded in 1952 by Bob Sheets in Altoona, Pennsylvania. That's just about 45 minutes south of State College, if you know where that's at. Over 70 years later, it is still wholly family-owned and operated by the Sheets family. 70 years and 700 and 60-plus locations. So you can see the Sheets family tree right there. There are about 16 family members of the Sheets family that come in and work in our business every single day. Like I said, it's wholly family-owned and operated. One of these Sheets members is actually the direct supervisor of my group, so I can attest personally to their involvement in our business. And their involvement in our business leads to an incredible offer And their involvement in our business leads to an incredible offer and contributes to an offer that separates us from many of our competitors throughout the regions we operate in. So Sheets has a full kitchen, you'll see the MTO logo throughout our stores, it means made to order, and you can actually order food off of our menu via one point eight million different combinations. It's truly made to order in our kitchens every single day, twenty-four, seven, you can order it any way you want it. If you want a salad at three in the morning, or if you want a breakfast sandwich at three in the afternoon with any funky combination you can think of, we're going to help you out with that. We also extend that made-to-order offering into our Sheets Brothers coffee area, so you can get specialty coffees, you can get milkshakes, you can get all sorts of different things. I recommend the double chocolate milkshake, it is a favorite of mine. And then also, we also, we have the convenience offer that we'll talk about. So you can get a wide range of snacks and beverages that you would think of in the convenience store, but we also have a wider range of grocery items as well. So you can get milk, eggs, cheese, bacon, bread, all those sorts of things. Remember, you can get those at three in the morning if you needed to, which is a valuable offering for people that work in the middle of the night, excuse me. So in addition to that restaurant that I was talking about, we also have thirty interior seats, so you can order your food at those touchpoint kiosks that you see in the middle of the screen there. That's how you customize your food any way you want it. And then if you want to take it to go, you can. If you want to sit down and dine in with us, that is definitely an option for you. You can surf our free wifi, you can have a sandwich with your friends, you can work on your laptop, whatever it is you need to do, we are there and we're off the space for that. That same touchpoint technology to order your food, we also use at our drive-throughs. So you'll see on the far right there, we do not have a traditional drive-through. You don't come up to our order points and speak to a person, you actually touch on the screen exactly how you want it, the same experience that you have inside the store. Leading off again from that kitchen and the restaurant feel that we have inside, we also have some outdoor seating, so you can take it outside when it's maybe not negative ten degrees outside, like I think we're going to have next week, but whatever floats your boat. And then that also contributes to the overall look and feel of our building. We have amazing four-sided architecture, full-section brick and stone, architectural metals, amazing-looking storefront, the buildings are really top-notch. So local investment here in Farmington Hills. So this is going to be about eight and a half million just in construction costs. Much of that construction investment is used local contractors, all of the engineering work is done using local firms, and our engineers are here with us this evening if you have any super technical questions. Some other local investments we have, our corporate office is here in Farmington Hills, or at least our Michigan corporate office, I should say. You'll be able to expect increased tax assessments on this property, it'll have thirty to thirty-five local jobs at this location, preferably full-time if an employee's availability allows it. And then we also have a lot of donation work that we participate in, so Sheets for the Kids, donations to local food banks weekly from every location. We partner with Special Olympics at every level, local, state, and national, and we also do numerous donations to local schools and organizations out of every single location we operate in. So going back to those thirty to thirty-five full-time jobs, we really have top-of-class benefits, best I have ever, ever seen. We have medical, dental, and vision, paid time off, parental leave, the employee assistance programs, and then all the financial benefits like 401K, quarterly bonuses, and tuition reimbursement. And I always like to highlight the tuition reimbursement because it kind of hits a little bit personal for me. Sheets paid for a majority of my college education, which, you know, I just like to put that little personal anecdote in there. And on top of that, we can really back up what a good employer Sheets is. So in 2024, you guys have probably heard of Fortune Magazine, Fortune five hundred, biggest companies in the country. Fortune also puts out a list of the one hundred best companies to work for, for the past decade Sheets has been on that list, past decade. Last year, they also said we are the second-best retailer, second-best retailer in the entire country to work for. And People Magazine also named us as one of the top one hundred companies that care. Those are some really big things that were really powerful. So going into the specifics of this Farmington Hills location, as Planner mentioned, we are going for a PUD. It's a six thousand one hundred and thirty-nine square-foot restaurant, convenience store, and gas station located northwest corner of Twelve Mile and Middle Belt Roads. It is eight point eight-three acres, it's going to have those six fuel pumps with the twelve positions, and it'll also have that convenience drive-through. So as she also indicated, there is a long process to get to this point. We've done the three meetings with the planning commission, and we also have engaged tirelessly with the community around us. We always like to make sure that we are a really good neighbor and we have those conversations with everyone. So some of the things that we've done out of those conversations to adjust our plan to make us fit in better with the community is we've added additional evergreen buffering. Someone brought up this time of the year, some of the trees maybe don't have the leaves like they do in the spring and summer, so we've made the addition of evergreens in there. We've done additional pedestrian access, we've put the six-foot-tall vinyl fence along our entire western and northern property lines to help buffer our operation from our neighbors. We're replacing all the sidewalk along our property lines, and then the planning commission asked us to add a drive-through bypass lane, reduce some parking, and do some lighting So this is the site plan that was presented to the planning commission. It has not been modified yet, like I said, or like Pat said, we are seeking a postponement this evening and continue working through some enhancements. We do have some renderings of this site plan for you. You can see how good our buildings look, they have that full-section brick and stone, all those architectural metals, very tasteful color selections. Here's another aerial. And another. Okay, so getting into the use standards, so we have three uses on this property. The first is fast food or carryout. This standard is met, so the only thing you have to do to meet this is to make sure that you are in a billion, building that also occupies another use, and we have that, we have convenience and fuel. So the second standard is the fuel. Apologize, these wires are tripping me up. And there are five different criteria underneath this use standard. So the first is that trucks and emergency vehicles can safely circulate the property, which they can, the standard is met, and we've proved that with our truck turning models. The second is that we are not an auto repair shop, we are not. The third is that we have appropriate setbacks, we definitely have those, and we'll talk a little bit more about those in a minute. The fourth is that we are not a car wash, we're not proposing a car wash here. Number five, number five has five sub-criteria underneath it. So sub-criteria number one is that we have an appropriate distance from the intersection from our entrances, we comply with that. We have minimum lot size, we're not an auto repair shop, we comply with those, number two and three. Number four is a little tricky to understand, but we comply with it. It's basically saying we can't store any automobiles, anything like that onsite. So outside of our normal operation, we do not intend to do that, but if an employee's car is parked for their eight-hour shift, that's something that is going to happen. Number five, that sub-criteria is that we have a loading zone, which we do. Okay, and then use number three is the drive-in restaurant. There are two criteria here, the first one has three sub-criteria. The first one is appropriate setbacks, the second one is appropriate setbacks from entrances, excuse me, stacking spaces from residential, we meet both of those standards. And then the third one is appropriate distance from drive-through to residential. We contend the spirit of this is met because of the substantial buffering that we are providing, you saw on the site plan, and I'm going to go over here in another minute. And then the final criteria under number three is distance from intersection to our driveways, and we comply. So this is the night of PUDs, there's been a lot of questions about PUDs, so we are going to go through the PUD criteria with you. But first, some of those dimensional requirements, or I should say improvements, that we mentioned that we are going to talk about, so you'll see a colorized site plan to the right there. The setback on the east side, coming from Middle Belt, is currently about eighty-four feet, we're proposing almost one hundred and twenty-six feet. It's an increase of fifty percent of what it is today. From the south, an increase of thirty-eight percent, the west seventeen, the north thirty-three. Those are some big numbers. We are definitely increasing our setbacks that are current, than what currently exists today, and offering a lot of additional buffering and open green space. We're reducing by seventy-five parks from what currently exists, and we are reducing nearly sixteen thousand square feet of pavement, and that's all going right into open space, increasing the property's open space by sixteen thousand square feet, a little under. So why that's important is if you look at this, the red line by the current zoning is where someone could put a building today. That is the current setbacks. You can see the way we are staying away from those, the excess distance that we are providing. I think that's a really powerful thing to think about. So those per UG criteria, we will go through them. So a PUD needs to be used in a zoning district. We are in a zoning district, so we comply with A. The second one is it can't be used to avoid any applicable zoning ordinances. We are not using it for that, we are utilizing high-quality architecture, a coupla, substantially increasing green space, decreasing impervious area, establishing that large buffer area, incorporating enhanced landscaping, establishing decorative knee wall along the front, bike racks to facilitate pedestrian areas, and the planning commission did say we complied with this. Number three, letter C. So a PUD will not be utilized in situations where the slamed land use can use, can meet the objectives of what's, we're trying to accomplish, excuse me. So we comply with this standard, so we originally submitted a rezone question, the planning commission to rezone the parcels to B three, but the PUD was preferred by the city instead. So we went with the PUD, the PUD was offered in response to that, so the city maintained the tools and the legal ability to restrict parts of the property, to preserve that green space that we are providing, to require those enhanced landscapings, all the benefits that I've mentioned that wouldn't otherwise be required. PUD allows you all to do that. Number four, letter D. A planning unit developed may be only used when it doesn't material add, material adds services loads to the city. So it does not do that. Most time when people think about this, they think about traffic. So we've done TIS, we are not adding substantial service loads to the city. When you think about a convenience store, convenience stores are convenient, right? We're capture, excuse me, traffic capture, not generator. You're going in, you're getting what you need, and you're going right back out, not a destination. Letter E, number five, so you have to meet at least one of these, there's eight underneath letter E, you have to only meet one, we meet seven of them, the planning commission previously determined that. So number one, permanently preserve open space, we talked about that. Number two is to put in a use that's compatible with the surrounding areas or existing uses. So the existing use has been commercial for quite some time before the restaurant closed, and also the surrounding area has some other fueling stations. Number three, to again dedicate open spaces in perpetuity, which we intend to do and comply. Number four is provide alternative uses for parcels, which can provide transition buffers to residential areas. We are doing that, we're actually purchasing additional parcels here above and beyond what we need to the north to be able to provide that additional buffering at great cost. Number six is promote the goals and objectives of the master plan, so your new master plan actually calls the southern part of this parcel commercial, so we comply with that. Number seven is to foster aesthetic appearance throughout the city, as we talked about the architectural enhancements that we do with our buildings, the full-section brick and stone, the architectural metals, the tasteful coloring, all those things. And then number eight is to bring about an orderly change of sites where it is needed. So the current location is deteriorating, we have some photos that we'll show you here in a little bit, so we are very happy to be able to come in and revitalize, this is a very important part of the city. And then the final one, letter F, number six, it shall not be used for a means of increasing density. We're not doing that either, so we comply, we're not seeking any dimensional variances like I talked about, we're actually staying well within the setbacks, and we're seeking very few waivers here. So, community benefits, because that's what the PUD is all about, right? You all have to weigh the benefits that we bring if they outweigh any of the minor waivers that we are asking for, and we definitely believe that they do. So, architecture. We have high-quality, four-sided architectural, full brick and stone, all the things that I've said, but I want to read a snippet from the Planner's Report. "As these properties redevelop over time, the city should have in place design and/or material standards to improve the overall appearance and durability of commercial buildings. You may consider this intent when contemplating the community benefits desired of this development." Think that's really important. Green space, we're substantially increasing and preserving green space, which we talked about, decreasing impervious area, and adding that massive buffer in between us and our residential neighbors. We're also doing top-notch landscaping, adding that knee wall, pedestrian access, and improving upon existing conditions. And some of those existing conditions, like I said, this is some of the photos we actually took just this afternoon, the building is not doing too good. So you can see some of the corners of the building, you can see some of the brick has fallen out, some of the stoops, and those types of things. Some more community benefits, so investments, again, we're investing around eight and a half million just in construction costs for this one, the thirty to thirty-five local full-time jobs with all of those first-in-class benefits, increased tax assessments, and all our donation work, like Sheets for the Kids, Special Olympics, food bank donations, local donations, and finally, a new offer. So we offer those clean and convenient locations, they're open twenty-four, seven, where your one-stop shop for those grocery items, the restaurant, and gas all into one. With that, I'll remind you, our quest this evening is that the city either approve or postpone our proposed PUD and site plan. With that, I'm going to turn back to Mr. Lennon.
Thanks, Alex. And thank you, once again, my name's Pat Lennon, I'm an attorney with the Hunningman Firm. Our local address is three nine, four hundred, Woodward Avenue in Bloomfield Hills. We represent the applicant, as you know. I've been asked to kind of highlight, I think, you know, from the legal analysis side, a few of the points that Alex made. First, as you've heard, we contend the application satisfies all the PUD approval criteria. Those are set forth in section thirty-four dash three dot twenty dot two, A through F. The planning commission agreed with this analysis and voted to recommend the application for approval. If approved, the project would yield tremendous community benefits to the area and would further the public health, safety, and welfare of the city, these are all standards of yours. The numerous benefits were discussed by Alex in his presentation, and we contend, obviously, that they satisfy all of the pre-PUD approval criteria and more. Importantly, from a legal perspective, the proposed use would bring the property into greater conformity with the master plan. The property is designated commercial under the future land use brand. This designation does not contemplate, well, for the most part, part of it does, but for the most part, does not contemplate the MC2 zoning district, which is multifamily. On the other hand, it expressly envisions the B one, B two, B three, and B four zoning classifications, and the B one and B three classifications specifically include all of the proposed uses, so it's a fit. In addition, and perhaps most importantly, the PUD would transform a vacant and deteriorating proper, property into a new state-of-the-art Sheets Cafe and fueling station. property into a new state-of-the-art Sheets Cafe and fueling station. The features and benefits of the property have been tailored through months, I mean, we're coming up on a year, months of work and negotiation with city staff, the planning commission, and community outreach. On the other hand, if it's not approved, this highly visible property will remain vacant since, to our knowledge, there's no realistic demand for other uses that are permitted in this zoning district. They've tried to do multifamily, it hasn't happened. And like other vacant properties, it will likely continue to deteriorate, become a safe for the accumulation of trash and debris, could attract vagrants, and become less safe. Indeed, we contend there's no other viable use of the property as currently zoned. So when you pull all of this together, then, you know, we contend that when you couple the fact that the PUD approval criteria are satisfied, as determined by the planning commission and as we argue, that the proposed uses would bring the property into greater compliance with the master plan, that the property would be improved, and the blight would be removed, and there is no other practical or viable use of the property as currently zoned. You know, putting all that together, we contend that the argument for approving the PUD is very strong, both as a practical matter and as a legal matter. At the end of the day, you know, those are the points I really wanted to emphasize. We hope you will follow the planning commission's recommendation and approve this PUD. Whether we postpone tonight and discuss this further at a future time, or we have a vote tonight, we believe we've done our part and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, so shall we open the public hearing? All righty. I am opening the public hearing, and the first one to speak, and then I'm going to read the list of all the public comments we received in addition to this, because we received a big stack of postcards. The first one to speak is Shelley Stamen, to be followed by Nassim Kazmika. Sure, I mispronounced that one. So Nassim, I look forward to hearing the correct pronunciation. I am reading the people who, and again, I'm following the format that I had with the prior, which is based upon alpha order of the people who submitted comment cards. Those opposed are B. Schwartz, Baldwin, Bob Schwartz, Susan and Carl Sekley, Clarence Norfleet, Dana Wilmot, Desai Family, Elena Mitvayeva, and Tim Pike, Emilio Ramirez of the Holly Hill Farms Association, Farida and Kasim Ali, Glenda McGuire, Jamila Thomas, Joanne Thompson, Kathleen Hayes Parvin, Lorraine Kapsa, Mark Sanders of the Westgate subdivision, Michael Lee, Paul Schultz, Richard Bozy, Bob, and I know I mispronounced that, I apologize, sir, Bob and Patty Love, Robert Kelly, Robert Young, Sherry Griffin, Tim Parvin, Tony Bradford. In favor, we received comments from Kathy Coustron and Raymond and Shelley Zink, and the do-not-postpone comments we received were from Carl Sekley, Michael Lee, and Tim Parvin. And so Shelley Stamen to be followed by Nassim Kazmika. Thank you.
Are you ready? My name is Shelley Stamen. I live about half a mile away. I am a retired real estate appraiser. I'm currently a real estate broker, and I worked at the Hock Community Center as the pickleball director for the last three years. So I'm looking at this as a holistic problem-solving issue, and what I'm looking at is the square mile, I'm sorry, of Twelve Mile, Thirteen Mile, Orchard Lake, and Middle Belt. We already have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight gas stations in that square mile. So do we need another gas station making nine in our square mile? I don't think we do. I mean, it's your opinion if we need to have nine, but we have eight. I'm also looking at what's the best use for that corner right now. Since I worked at the Hock, and I know we put a lot of money into that community center, I'm only thinking we need more residential use in that area. And as you mentioned with the Schaefer Development, you all mentioned, we need residential new construction, and Cove Creek, which you mentioned, is a perfect little condo. And I want you to really think about, even though it's a little different, if you put a Cove Creek condo on that corner that's walkability to the Hock Community Center, you're bringing more residential use to Farmington Hills to use the Hock, as opposed to bringing a commercial enterprise in there, which is not going to help residential use. I look at that picture, and that's awesome, right? I see that picture on the southeast corner of 696 and Orchard Lake Road. You have people on the highway popping off, getting gasoline, getting off convenience. I see that right across from OCC, where kids are getting convenience, kids are getting issues. I don't see that at Twelve Mile and Middle Belt Road. One concern in speaking to the residents of the area is the 24-hour nature of it. Unfortunately, just two weeks ago, we saw what happened to the BP station, I think at Thirteen Mile. Typically, the after twelve o'clock crowd, sometimes they work, but sometimes that's after the bar, sometimes it's just a little different. So with that residential area, if you do proceed with this, at least ask for a closing time like at ten o'clock, or something that's conducive to the rest of the area. The Wendy's closes, I think, at ten, the Arby's closes at ten, but I won't take up too much of your time, people are waiting. But that's all, my viewpoint is a problem-solving technique. What can we do to bring residential to the neighborhood, move this excellent facility to Orchard Lake and 696, where it might be better suited? Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, Nassim Kazmika, to be followed by Thomas Brunner.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nassim Kazmika. I'm owner of the Soroki that's located inside of Shell gas station on Twelve and Orchard Lake. A lot of points were made earlier is, one of the big issue that we have is being open 24 hours. When we first started operating that Shell gas station, it was open 24 hours. The owner decided to close it down because we were seeing a lot of crime rate that kept on going up, a lot of theft. It just brought a lot of people unwanted, crime that came into that area. Also, as previously mentioned, there is, you know, this will be the sixth gas station in that stretch of a mile. You already got two in that corner, and three on Twelve and Orchard Lake. I believe a consumer and everybody here can walk into any of the gas station, grab everything that the street is operating. So what's in that, you know, convenience store that's going there that's new, that's not available to the community? I mean, you know, besides a great building, there's absolutely nothing. There's gas station with food, with liquor, snacks, anything you can imagine and grab in at any time that you want, and any of those corners are already available. As mentioned earlier, you know, Sheets is a Fortune 500 company, right? Which is good, you know, that's something to be proud of. But now you have local businesses that we've all worked and donated our taxes, and we support all the communities here, whether it's a fire, you know, fire station or the cops that come in there. They'd be taken away from everybody, from the locals that we all sweat, you know, all sweat blood and tears into the community here. Again, I believe it's a great project. Do I believe, does it belong on Twelve Mile and Middle Belt? No. I see this something as a truck stop off a freeway, off an interstate, where people are able to go grab their snacks, grab their food, and head on the road, not in the middle of a neighborhood. I mean, there are homes behind there, there's homes across the street, there's homes all around. The last point that I make, I heard earlier, no project is better than a bad project. And I'd rather have someone, something else that go in there that'll be beneficial to the community versus another store, another convenience store, that everybody's going to walk in and you can grab from. The five gas stations are already there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Kazmika, just to share with you, council's a big fan of Sorokis. We regularly cater from Soroki before our council meetings, so thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you for the support.
And hey, folks, I need to just ask, when people do like this, I get it, you're agreeing, and you're being quiet, and that's lovely, but we also want to make sure that we're able to pay attention to the people speaking, and it's a distraction. So I'm going to ask you to please not, I understand you have points of view, and that's great, and everybody can come up and have their three minutes, but let's make sure we're able to give our full attention to whoever it is is giving public comment at that time, and be good neighbors, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Next up, Thomas Brunner, to be followed by Laura Jervasi. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Thomas Brunner. I have lived on Balmoral Way for 26 years and been a Farmington Hills resident for 31 years. I raised my family here. My kids consider this home. Not home to me, I'm from somewhere else. We have three streets that exit onto Twelve Mile. This year is going to be another year in hell. And I just found out 696 East is closing. Now, I engaged in an internet exchange with probably Alex who made the presentation, or someone from Sheets today, and my answer is this is the wrong place at the wrong time. So where I live, I have dealt with the Birmingham Temple lights that I don't think are to code for 26 years. I can't see the stars at night. The 24-hour operation that's there is Planet Fitness, they're pretty non-intrusive. There's nothing else, it's medical, it's office. And we've got a neighborhood association that's been fighting about the Twelve Mile upgrade. Getting in and out of our street is dangerous, and it's not going to get any better. I don't believe that this will just be a neighborhood-only destination. And 24 hours has all the implications of the things that were said, as well as the earlier conversation about the development on Thirteen Mile, right? There was an accident on Twelve Mile right by my street when I was walking the dog the other day. We don't need this here. We for sure don't need it now. And, you know, and my interactions with the city over the last few years have mostly been negative. So as a result of one of them, I added up, I have paid $100,000 in property taxes in the time I have lived here. I am asking for my value back from my city. My daughter works for Farmhouse. She's worked there. It's a great family-owned business that will serve you coffee and ice cream at a reasonable price. When she started, she didn't have a car. Guess how she got there? She walked, and she rode her bike. And those, the mile roads are not safe as it is. So where is Sheets going to put their entries and exits? How is that going to merge with the Twelve Mile and Middle Belt traffic that's already a problem? You're going to make another Twelve and Orchard Lake if you allow this proposal to go through, right? I don't want my daughter getting killed going to work. And I don't know how they're ever going to address the traffic here. My suggestion in my interactions today was go drive the businesses on the east side of Twelve and Orchard Lake all day. See how many near misses. See how many almost accidents. See how many dangerous things happen there, because I don't go to a lot of those businesses routinely for this very reason that will be caused by putting this business here. We don't need 24 hours, and we don't need that size business in three lots, only one of which is currently business, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Laura Jervasi, to be followed by Joe Noonie.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Jervasi. I did speak at the planning commission meeting as well. Appreciate your interest in hearing what we have to say. It's funny, I write things out, and then I always come up with more questions than comments. I do have a couple of things that are concerning to me. Number one, and I might have missed it, I didn't hear any comments from Sheets regarding the changes in the lighting. That was one of the big issues with the planning, that they had to lower lighting, but they were thinking of adding more lighting. So lighting was a big issue at the planning committee, but I didn't hear them address it, so I may have missed it. Secondly, I did hear the gentleman say that, you know, they did a lot of community outreach. Well, I live right next door, and I have not been outreach, and neither have any of my companions, none of my co-owners in our condos. No one I know has been outreach by Sheets, so I don't know who they're reaching to, but I haven't reached to the people who are being mostly affected by their proposed development. The other thing that I have question about and concerns about that I wanted to bring up is, my concern is that, you know, Sheets wants to come here, and I think it's lovely. I think it's, it looks wonderful, like the previous, the previous discussions that we had here tonight with you for the other development. Nice concept, wrong place, but what our concerns are, is that the people around there are, we have this visceral reaction to hearing of a 24-hour gas station selling liquor all night long, being open, when we have a very quiet environment. I worked at Beaumont, Farmington Hills for 35 years, and I worked many midnight shifts and well into one, two o'clock in the morning, and I felt comfortable driving from Grand River, Middle Belt, to Twelve Mile. I felt comfortable, and I live, just turned left on Middle, or Twelve Mile, and there I am at my home. I felt comfortable because there weren't people out. You know, it was a safe place. I'm a single woman, I felt safe. I'm having a visceral reaction, as many of my co-owners are, to this proposal. So we're not concerned about what Genopolis looks like right now. That's the least of our concerns. We want the right thing at the right time, and we appreciate the conversation. I'm not going to go into traffic and things because other people have mentioned that, but those were a few of my concerns and questions that I had initially.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Joe Noonie, to be followed by Chuck Rose.
Madam Mayor and members of council, my name is Joe Noonie, and I live in the same complex right next door at Beechwood Hills, which is adjacent to the proposed Sheet site. And everything I was going to say has already been spoken. So I, to save time, I just ditto everyone that has spoken so far, and rather would like to propose the idea of finding another developer to perhaps build a Greek restaurant at that site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Noonie. Chuck Rose, all right. Chuck Rose, to be followed by Carl Sekley, please. Chuck here? Okay. Then Carl, you're up, to be followed by Mary Ann Vallade, or Vallade. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Appreciate all your patience here this evening. Carl Sekley, I live at the Reserve at Wood Creek, which is just north of Twelve Mile on the east side of Middle Belt. One of the original owners, bought there in 2001 and have been there since. Also president of the HOA, of the Reserve, the Nofenon president over the course of that time for 10-plus years. The, I won't be redundant to what's already been said, I'll make a couple of unique points. One, the proposal that Sheets, although it's beautiful up on the screen, isn't fitting with the character of the neighborhood. We don't have any other 24-hour operation businesses. And I think equally important, there's, I think they said a dozen fueling stations that are going, will go into that location, which is equal to or more than exists at the other two corners. And this might solve the problem of Genopolis today. In two years from today, you're going to have two other corners that are out of business because they're going to bury them. There's not that much volume coming through there, so let's not be short-term in our decision-making. Let's think long-term and find something that's complementary to that intersection rather than something that's competitive with what's already there and could, long-term, actually damage the other two street corners. The other point I wanted to address was this matter of community outreach. As president of the HOA, there have not been a single outreach that's been made. I would have expected if you did do community outreach that you would have touched bases with the HOA presidents, but we've not, we've not heard anything. So I don't know who they're talking with. We certainly would have been happy to engage them in conversation to help shape the proposal, but we've not, we've not heard anything from them. So lastly, I would hope that council would not postpone this vote. There's a lot of folks that are here tonight to express their views, and I don't think collectively would all want to come back again for a postponement, and we would urge you to vote this proposal down this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sekley. Mary Ann Vallade, followed, okay, Paul was not here, followed by Chuck Ferment.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Vallade. I've lived in Farmington Hills since 1978, and I live on Colony Park Drive. Thank you for staying up and listening to all of us tonight. I also, well, first of all, Mr. Soiki did a fantastic job explaining everything that they're offering, and it's really, the fact that they comply... that they're offering. And it's really, the fact that they comply with so much that has been asked of them is awesome. However, I find, first of all, I would sound like repetitive if I went through everything that everyone has said. Just know that we all think about those things. And overall, I would say it's a matter of density. We were talking about density in the previous one, and it was people. This is density of gas stations. And there is just not the need on that corner. And as this gentleman just said, they would probably put the other ones on their own corner out of business, and who knows about the ones that have access to 696. So I'm going to take a leap and make a suggestion, just in my humble opinion. I would leave that area zoned for restaurant, but how about if you contact the hospitality programs at one of the universities, there's several around here that do that, and create a restaurant or two, whatever the space will handle, that could be used as apprenticeship or internships. I think the people of this area would be happy to support something like that. And it seems like the city of Farmington Hills would be proud to support some more education. And because you, I feel like universities, they would take the time with all the other resources that they have within their programs to do something about the green space, traffic safety, providing quality food and not fast food. And I just think that could be something for you to consider. Thank you very much for listening to me. Oh, one more thing. It does say in here, excuse me, that flyer that we got from Sheetz in the mail, and it does talk about how they have been named by Fortune as 100 best company to work for. Well, who do they hire, for sure? Is it local people? Is it all different kinds of people? And it just, it would be something I would want to know more about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chuck Ferment to be followed by Alan Whitmore. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chuck Ferment. I live on Forest Brook Drive, just under, my subdivision is just under a mile away from the proposed site. And, and I'm drawing a blank. I haven't had stage fright in decades. Much like the other proposal earlier tonight, I don't believe that the Sheetz site is the right thing for the right spot in Farmington Hills. It's, it is a great thing. It's a good idea, but not at that location for our city. Additionally, there's only a limited appetite for spending money at convenience stores or gas stations in the city. And if there's another one, it would be taking money away from existing sites, taking, well, somebody else mentioned it earlier. The other two gas stations will close. We'll end up with two more vacant properties. And Councilmember Randy Bruce said it right. No development is better than bad development. And at that location, that would be bad development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alan Whitmore to be followed by Tor Schwaydar.
Sorry, guys. I'm sorry.
My name is Alan Whitmore. I'm the president of the Forest Brook Pebblebrook Homeowners Association, which is located on southwest corner of 12 and Inkster, about a mile from the Sheetz proposal. So I'm going to be speaking for the, for our board. We believe that we've established that the 12 and Middle Belt location is not close enough to the 696 Orchard Lake Road exit to serve as a truck stop. Also, we believe that people who do not work a swing shift should be sleeping from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. So we do not want a nighttime eatery that is available to encourage people to be wandering about our residential neighborhoods in the middle of the night. There are several food places that are within one or two miles of 12 and Middle Belt, such as the Craft Brew City, which is open until 11:00 p.m. If there are no truckers and few citizens who want to frequent Sheetz in the middle of the night, Sheetz is likely at risk for failing at that location. Farmington Hills certainly does not want that. Now, if you'll allow me to think out of the box for a moment, if the quality of Sheetz stores are so desirable that Farmington Hills would like to be able to promote that we have a Sheetz store within our borders, maybe either Sheetz or Farmington Hills should try to persuade the Paul Mitchell Cosmetology School, which occupies the former Steak and Ale Building adjacent to the 696 westbound exit to Orchard Lake Road, to move to the old Genopolis building. This would make the Paul Mitchell property available to erect, to erect a Sheetz store near the highway interchange and, and far away from the residential neighborhoods. I believe that many Farmington Hills residents would support a Sheetz at this location. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Whitmore. I enjoyed that, reading that from you over the weekend. Tor Schwaydar to be followed by Michelle Reed Harris, please. We've missed, we've missed the 11 o'clock news window, folks. Hopefully, somebody recorded it for you.
Hello, I'm Michelle Reed Harris, and I live on South Howard, which in Farmington Hills, Michigan. Thank you, Mayor Rich, and the City Council for the opportunity to address you about my concerns about the proposed project for Sheetz. My husband and I moved to Farmington Hills about 21 years ago from the far east side of Detroit. And what I learned about Wood Creek, what I liked most was the quiet. In fact, the first three weeks that I lived in Farmington Hills, I could barely sleep because it was too quiet. There were no ambulances. There were no car horns. There were absolutely no noisy neighbors, and it was just too quiet. My concern about the Sheetz development is the noise, the light, and the traffic congestion. I work at CNS Healthcare in Novi, Michigan, at 10 and Hagerty, and I drive by Middle Belt and 12 Mile to and from work every single day. You know, my additional concern is worsening of the rush hour traffic to and from work. And also, as you've heard, there is absolutely no lack of gas stations on 12 Mile between Middle Belt and Orchard Lake Road. This development with its 24-hour traffic, noise, and light is not needed or desirable in my community of Farmington Hills, Michigan, and I respectfully ask you to vote this proposal down today. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Ventura to be followed by Lee Blisman.
Good evening. Appreciate you listening to what I have to say. I'm a longtime resident of Farmington Hills, about almost 40 years now. I live in Wood Creek subdivision. I think that this is an inappropriate application of this restaurant slash gas station to the corner. And I, as the speaker before me mentioned, it's inappropriate because it's going to potentially draw people in to the neighborhood at hours of the night due to the fact that it's open, number one. Number two, it serves alcohol up until a certain time. And also, it's a restaurant where people can congregate. Now, the limited number of people that would be available at that time that are neighbors in our neighborhood probably is not that great. So it's, by definition, going to increase the number of people that are coming in and potentially disrupting the peace and harmony of our neighborhood there and affecting public safety and public health, which is one of the charter items in the PUD that was mentioned before, was to create a better environment for the people that live here. And I think that this is consistent with, you know, the Farmington Hills Year 2000 plan that I participated in 20 some odd years ago. And I would appreciate that you consider this. As the people have mentioned, all of these considerations and vote this proposal down, please. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Lee Blisman to be followed by Daniel Burley. Good evening, Ms. Blisman. Ms. Blisman is a, was a longtime employee, beloved employee of the city, so nice to see you tonight.
Hello. Okay. Council members, I'm here to speak about the PUD request by Sheetz regarding the property at 27815 and 28025 Middle Belt Road. Originally, the request for rezoning, it became one for PUD qualification. I note that it is required that a PUD shall result in an improvement to the public health, safety, and welfare in the area affected. Further, the proposed use of the planned unit development will not materially add service and facility loads beyond those contemplated in the future land use plan. When this development first came before the Planning Commission, it was recommended that a traffic study be submitted. It's April 18th of 2024. June 20th, again, the need for a traffic study was mentioned. The request has become, had become one for PUD qualifications by June 20th, and again, a traffic study is mentioned. The requirement was again mentioned in the motion by Commissioner Brickner. In the site plan review for the September 19th meeting, it was again mentioned. November 12th correspondence from the city engineer states that a traffic impact study had been identified, but that until it is studied and commented on, he did not see how this use and site plan could be approved. That was mine. The study may show this, the health, safety, and welfare in the area is impacted. Sheetz has made all sorts of representations as to how good, even beneficial, a community member they have been in other locations, not disputing these representations. However, if council decides to grant approval, I would ask that all requirements on open space, lighting, avoiding light pollution, and signs be permanently attached to the property so that any owner in succession would be advised of the restrictions to which an owner is obligated. And I quote again Commissioner Brickner's motion, reiterating E3 of 34322, that the city should accept dedication or set aside an isolation of open space in perpetuity. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Burley, followed by Bruce Roberts. Going once, going twice, Daniel. Bruce Roberts will be followed by Marilyn Reichenbach.
Hi, I'm Bruce Roberts. I live on Forest Brook Drive, just about a half mile southeast of the proposed location. I wanted to comment on what I foresee as harmful effects of this facility. They, they mentioned it as a custom to order a restaurant mostly with some gas pumps. I see it as a facility that's open 24 hours, has 24-hour bathroom facilities that people will seek out and use. I believe they are scheduled at 40 parking spots. It's my understanding that many 24-hour facilities are now used by a class of the society that are called car dwellers and van dwellers. These people tend to drive around at night, look for 24-hour facilities to go sleep in, and they're vagabonds. And there's a potential that there could be vagabonds in our neighborhood. And unfortunately, with those people, there is sometimes an increase in crime. The type of crime is local robberies or drug use, prostitution, things like that. It could happen on that corner. There is the question of zoning also. I purchased my property with the understanding that the residential, or that the area around there would have a consistent land use. And earlier today, one of the council members mentioned that this PUD process is used when there seems to be a zoning problem that needs to be solved for the benefit of the community. I don't see a benefit here of having another gas station. We have those. Another convenience stores, we have those. Another restaurant, we have those. The 24-hour part doesn't seem like it fits. I don't think there's a problem being solved with this PUD process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Marilyn Reichenbach to be followed by Chandra, I'm sorry, I can't read it. I, I can't, eh? Okay. Chandra? Is Marilyn here? Left, okay. So following Chandra will be Janine Co, yep. Oh, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for, everyone, for staying this late. I really appreciate it. You know, even though there's been a call for postponement, I really appreciate everyone staying here. And I request that a decision be made today. We've taken a lot of our time away from our family to be here, and our two young daughters are by themselves at home. And we are here, old enough, we are 11 and 13. We are here for them. We are here not just for our generation. We are here for the next generation. That's what this is all about. And we have, no, we, they are really great students, academic and other extracurricular activities. They are really good citizens of this city. We're all very proud to be here. Let this not be an initiation of another brain drain as well. You have to think more than two years, five years, 10 years. This could lead to, we, you know, our daughter said, do not sell our home, because they love it. They love it in the neighborhood. We live in Wood Creek. So they are able to bicycle across the Middle Belt to go to the farmhouse for ice creams during summertime with other girls. So that's how safe it is right now. Can you imagine if there's a 24/7 operation in that corner? That's just going to destroy the, 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 the lifestyle, the experience of these, our young children. We, you see here, no, we have people who are, you know, somebody say like 55 is too old. No, this is, we need to care for our next generation. This is what this is about. So everybody has talked about, I, I would reiterate the same points, but I wanted to add these other points as well. Let's not be, you know, I wash with some of the numbers that's been presented. Things such as traffic capture. Traffic capture, what is being mentioned is just a residence. We can expect, no business is going to be successful with the traffic that is in that area. They are expecting traffic from 11 Mile, Orchard Lake, Northwest Run, 10 Mile, and so on. So that means there's a lot more traffic expected. And there are, you know, schools, now private schools where we have to drive them, the kids. So there is much more issues. My wife will take one.
Part two from the Cogan TV.
Stealing some of my points. No, that's good.
And, and, hey, folks, I, I know it's getting late. If you need to have conversation with your neighbor, take it in the hall, please, so we can focus. Thank you.
So I also want to quote Dr. Bruce saying, sometimes no development is better than bad development. And not that there's anything wrong with Sheetz. This is just the wrong spot for the Sheetz, for the points that all my wonderful neighbors have said and my wonderful husband. And I'm concerned about, yeah, I think that may be a little disingenuous, the, the traffic capture idea. I mean, surely, some people will drive by and they will stop. But, but, you know, there's no traffic to capture at 3:00 a.m. It's going to be a destination for people at 3:00 a.m. And, and not, and again, And not, and again, people who maybe want to park their car, you know, sadly, who might maybe want to park their car there to sleep, but, you know, maybe they have other, you know, psychosocial issues that need to be handled and not in our parking lot at 12 and Middle Belt. And I'm also concerned about the traffic, rush hour traffic. There are four schools within a little more than a mile that require parents to drive their children, or the kids drive themselves, even scarier, right? You've got your high schooler driving themselves to, there's the Muslim School on Middle Belt, there's Mercy at, what, 11 and Middle Belt, there's the Catholic School on 12 Mile, and then there's the Public School where my kids go, the Farmington Steam Academy, which has no busing. There's over 700 students who go to the Farmington Steam Academy, and it's all parent drop-off. So I'm just worried for the safety in the, especially in the mornings and in the afternoons. It seems like morning is more congested, everybody trying to get their kid to school, you know, on, you know, by the clock, on time. So for all the reasons that my neighbors said, and for the, the traffic and the safety of the students, I urge you to vote this down today. Because unlike the previous one, well, maybe they can rework the development, have fewer units, and make it nicer. The Sheets is going to be the Sheets. So again, you know, I'm sure it's a lovely employer, just not at that corner. Maybe they can take over the Roberto's area. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Yandor to be followed by Frank Esmar.
Hi, Michael Yandor. I live on Moran Street. I guess I'm the lone dissenter here tonight. I, I spoke to a Sheets manager 12 years ago. I used to have, I used to do a lot of business travel. In that time, I visited a lot of communities that had Sheets, and I always had the same response, Sheets is amazing. Never heard anything negative until today, with a bunch of people who have never been to a Sheets, never had one in their community.
Okay.
That's.
All right.
You know, and the, the comments I hear are kind of scary. I hear a lot of people wanting to stifle competition. It doesn't really matter how many gas stations we have in Farmington Hills now. Sheets is the better product, by my experience. Their 700 stores say so. It's not right to tell a new business, a better business, that they can't compete with existing businesses. In, in my 20 years as a resident of Farmington Hills, and my nine years as working in Farmington Hills, I bought gas at 12 and Middle Belt twice. I bought a full tank of gas 20 years ago, until I drove the rest of the way home and found out it's 30, 30 cents cheaper closer to my house. Never bought gas there again. That was the one at the southwest corner. I bought gas at the Sunoco once because I was racing between meetings during work. I bought two gallons to get enough to get me to the office to my next meeting and back home where I could get gas. Sheets will bring competitive gas to overpriced gas stations who, in my opinion, are soaking customers. Let the competition happen. Let the free market happen. Let the people and the travelers decide what they want and when they want it. Now, I, I am a dad. I am 52 years old, and I am in bed by 11 o'clock at night, even on the weekend. I used to keep late hours, and when I was younger, and a resident here, and I was very disappointed at how little 24/7 operation there, there was when I needed to get milk for my son, or get cough medicine, or whatever. If I happened to be getting my MRI at the Beaumont at 2:00 in the morning, because I could get in and out fast, then if, I, there was no point in stopping any for a sandwich or even trying to get gas. People do work at night, they do work late, they have good jobs, and, and they have just as much right to stop for gas and food at 2:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the morning. Our police officers work 24 hours. As far as crime, I mean, we had six gas stations broken into while they were closed at night. I see that as being irrelevant. And again, Sheets is not a law enforcement agency, they're a business. They are, in effect, a victim if a crime were to happen there. Policing is your responsibility, the police department, that's why we pay taxes. If you're concerned there's going to be a crime, stake it out and arrest the criminals. That's what we pay for. And looking at your financials, it looks like there might be some room for additional overtime policing equipment, or whatever else you need. They're definitely going to get more tax revenue from it. But it's private property, somebody wants to sell it, they're losing money on it, they have a good, they have a good plan to buy it, a time-tested plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Frank Esmar to be followed by Dion DeGenero.
Frank Esmar, Bloomfield Development. I'm the one that built the Crestwood condos condominium next door to it, adjacent, and I also still own the lot they carved out, out of there. This project doesn't belong in this area. This project belongs on Telegraph, Woodward, M59, is going to bring a lot of traffic, a lot of crime, 24 hours, drive-through. This is a neighborhood business, not commercial business. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dion DeGenero to be followed by Amy Broglan-Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor Rich, and members of City Council. My name is Dion DeGenero, and I'm here representing my mother, who lives directly across the street from this development at 28030 Middle Belt Road. I'm a lifelong Farmington Hills resident. That's the house I grew up in. Three generations of my family have lived in that house, and we intend to keep it in our family for generations to come. I'm not going to reiterate what everything said, what I've emailed all of you individually and heard back from most of you. I do, I'm going to change everything that I was going to say tonight. The packet for tonight's meeting was released at some point this afternoon to the public, so I have not had the normal amount of time that I like to have to scour these things. But as far as I could tell, and what I could review from sitting in here this evening while everyone else was talking, is that there were no meaningful changes to the lighting or the drive-through proposed by Sheets at this meeting. And part of the Planning Commission's approval was contingent on them bringing changes to this meeting. The changes that they needed to make were for the wildly excessive lighting and a drive-through that is not supposed to be next to single-family and multifamily homes without the proper thoroughfares. I think one thing that hasn't really been touched on is Sheets relies on its bright lighting for safety during its overnight hours, but that same lighting is also what is going to negatively impact us at times when we don't want it there. That issue highlights the fundamental conflict of why we're all here, which is Sheets' business model obviously does not fit into the residential area, everyone said it. But furthermore, I think it's, begs the question, why are we, I, I don't think we should consider delaying this decision-making process. Sheets knew and had practically two months to come to this meeting with these changes ready, in the same way that we had that same two months' notice, or whatever it was, to, to come here and speak on it. So I am, I think it's pretty clear that there's not really going to be meaningful changes to this plan that satisfy both Sheets as well as the residents. And I think at this point, it would make more sense to acknowledge that this parcel is not suitable for their proposal, and I think that council should encourage them to explore other locations within Farmington Hills. The Grand River and Middle Belt location that they already proposed is perfect. It also doesn't have a drive-through. I think that there are plenty of parcels around 14 and Orchard Lake that would make a ton of sense for anchoring the new development in that area, and there's no gas stations over there. So we're not opposed to development of this corner. We did not speak out against the senior living, and I am all in favor of more missing middle housing to be our neighbors. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Amy Broglan-Peterson to be followed by Michael Menlo.
Good evening, again. Thank you again for allowing us to speak. Amy Broglan-Peterson, Westgate Subdivision. Just wanted to have a couple of comments. When we were here for the Planning Commission meeting, a woman, a very well-spoken woman, coined the term "truck stop" to describe Sheets. I think that's very appropriate. I travel quite a bit. I'm familiar with Sheets. It's an excellent, excellent business. It does not belong in a neighborhood. It does belong, as the gentleman previous said, on a Telegraph road, or a very busy thoroughfare, which actually has trucks on it. Not in a neighborhood. It also is destined to become a destination for people who are out in the middle of the night, as also mentioned. For those reasons, I think it's actually quite stupid that we're sitting here still discussing this, quite frankly. I, I think it makes zero sense to have this facility in this type of location. I also teach business at Michigan State University in the Business School, and I'm very pro-business. My major concern, which nobody has brought up, is that this is now the second location that will be in the proximity of just several miles within one another. I was very surprised when I was driving down 12 Mile Road today for other business to look to my right and see a Sheets sign. So they now, as they mentioned, have a corporate office also established in Farmington Hills. So I guess what I'm, what I'm seeing is the beginning of what could be a very predatory position for Sheets in this area. And contrary to a gentleman several ago who, who talked about free business, which I totally agree with in principle, what I instead see as a future is a lot of big Sheets gas stations taking out many of these small business owners that I also see sitting here. So as a business professional that teaches business, I think this is not a good move for our area, for our citizens, for our local business owners, and for anybody who needs to fill their gas tank with a competitive rate. So thank you for your time tonight, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Michael Menlo to be followed by Angie Smith.
Hello again, and thank you again for listening to us and taking the time. I wish I could all pour you vodka and tonic right about now.
Bad idea.
You probably might want one, glass of Chardonnay. I am a 30-plus-year resident of Farmington Hills, between Holly Hills and, and Wood Creek. And I personally second the proposal to move the Paul Mitchell Studio to, to 12 Mile and Middle Belt to make room for the Sheets at, at that location. I have not been to all 750 Sheets locations, but I've been to a number of them, and, and I can attest that they, excellent organization, and the clean, clean, well-run, probably cleanest restaurants I've ever been to. But that's kind of beside the point, you know, in, in this situation, I think. And I fully understand the desire to replace the once-beloved, you know, Genopolis at that And I spoke earlier about road safety. I think another consideration here is the traffic that will be coming down 12 Mile from Orchard Lake, from Northwestern, an already pretty rocky 12 Mile, as we all know. So that's another consideration to think about, as well as the safety. People spoke about, you know, Mercy, student drivers, parents driving people, you know, driving their students to and from school. I think that's another, that's been spoken about. So I just don't believe that there's really, and there's also no safety concern now, I think, with the current Genopolis location. I, I sometimes rarely cut through there. The police are all outside. But, but I really don't believe that that's, that's, that's a concern right now. So thank you for your time, and, and I really don't think this is the, the right proposal at this time, at this location.
Thank you. Angie Smith to be followed by Stephen Woig, Ludwig, sorry.
At 3:00 in the morning, I am not trying to eat a salad. I really am not. As much as I need one, I, not at 3:00 in the morning. I appreciate that they want to help our students by getting them jobs and offer them scholarships. But what about our students that would be working in these establishments? Anything can happen. Many of you that sit on this council, and I think chief may have been the chief during the time, the Weinstein family. It was a family of a mother and two sons. One would have been 32, the same age as my middle daughter. They were killed on 12 Mile, right there at Orchard Lake, by a drunk driver in the middle of the afternoon. So we are, and they were, it was horrific. I don't want to go into what happened. But one of those young men would have been 32 years old. They lost a mother and two children. So if we're talking about having alcohol sold at all types of night, so just say hypothetically, someone leaves the Craft Brewery, still hasn't had enough to drink, and you're driving down 12 Mile, while you're trying to open that bottle, or you're taking a sip, you're going to hurt someone. Do I think that it's a bad restaurant? I don't know. I've never had Sheets. But I've had the opportunity to talk to people in the, in the back, and even other members of this community are saying, well, you're taking it out of the high-rent area, and you're bringing it down here. So I agree with taking this restaurant somewhere else, but let's think about the safety of our community members, nurses that get off at 1:00 in the morning, and other things. But let's think about someone drinking and driving and hurting someone, and not even that, the sex trafficking, a predator that can come out and do just anything. And if we have a young student that works in this establishment, what can happen to them? A robbery. So I'm not against Sheets, but I do think we need more restaurants. Like Gretchen said, fix the damn roads, put some restaurants in. Because at the end of the day, I'm feeling like someone with a size 10-foot is trying to squeeze their foot into a seven. So let's do something to make it better here in Farmington Hills.
Thank you. Stephen Ludwig to be followed by David Baker.
Mayor.
Ludwig?
He left.
Okay, thank you. David Baker to be followed by Sharon Schultz.
Thank you. I'm David Baker, and I represent the 64 homes that is in the Franklin Forest and Fairway Association, just about a mile away. I'm not going to belabor all these issues because we frankly concur with everything we've heard, and I'm sure everything you've already heard as well. But we did want to, want to be on record in solidarity with our, our neighbors on this. Our Board of Directors and members of our Homeowner Association that recently attended an annual meeting were overwhelmingly opposed to, to the Sheets development. This is simply the wrong development in that location. I'd like to remind the council with, with all due respect, that not very long ago, you did say you did not want any more gas stations in the city. Well, this is a gas station, it's certainly on, on steroids. And I understand the timing, but still, it is a gas station. So I would close by urging you to not table this tonight, but to simply vote it down. Thank you.
Sharon Schultz to be followed by Tim Parven. Sharon Schultz. Tim, you still here? Okay. She's, okay, well, we'll come back. Kathleen Hayes-Parven to be followed by Margaret Keys-Howard.
Good evening, and thank you for listening. My name's Kathleen Hayes-Parven. I am a Farmington Hills resident. I live on Sylvan Lane. I lived at Wood, in Wood Creek for 30 years, and have enjoyed Heatherwood condos for the last three years. I'm just to take you back in history for a little bit to the mid-'90s, when there was a big box Home Depot going into that same southeast corner of the intersection that we're talking about right now. And residents got together at that time to battle some of the same issues we're talking about tonight. And community came together, and they talked about congestion and decreasing property values, and the community fought that battle at that time and won. We got a beautiful L-shaped strip mall there that you're probably all familiar with, with the CVS, and a Wright's Phillips, and a Planet Fitness, which I like to walk to from my home, and I'm a little bit concerned about that with respect to traffic. But anyway, it was a successful experience, and we lessened in density and had a nice compromise there. Fast forward to now, we're battling again. The community has come together, and I'm really proud about that. Made lots of friends, and residents have, have really coalesced around this non-compatibility of Sheets in our area. Sheetz in our area. And we're trying to keep the integrity of our neighborhood, and I love my neighborhood. I won't repeat all the reasons, we all know that. They all come under the heading of common sense for me. Don't get me wrong, I know that Sheetz really does have a place, and Romulus is good, and the side of the highway is better, but not here. And I look forward to the Chill Box that's being shiny new coming up on that corner and the Sanoco that's there. And I really want to support the community that I live in and the businesses that are here, and protect our environment that we all care about. And we've been making our voices heard. We've written, we've emailed, we've called, we've canvassed, and I think it's really clear that the majority of people are opposed to this. In closing, I just want to say that I don't think that Sheetz represents what we stand for in this area of, in this city. Livonia has said no, and maybe they've got to say no some more. Rochester Hills has said no, so has Madison Heights. And I really hope that our city council and our mayor say no tonight. I think this is enough already with sitting here for six hours. And I appreciate your time. No more delays. Thank you so very much.
You. Tim Parven to be followed by Margaret Keys-Howard.
Good evening, council members. I am here as a 32-year resident of Farmington Hills on behalf of the Heatherwood condos on Sylvan Lane, 1/8 of a mile from the Genopolis. We are one of 10 HOAs that comprise over 840 single-family homes, taxpayers, and condominium owners. It's probably our largest investment for most of us, not something we can easily sell or liquidate or walk away or move on from. We enjoy the tranquility, safety, and peace of mind, our neighborhood, that is centered on 12 Mile and Middlebelt. Yet this evening, we're considering dropping in a Walmart of gas stations here with a 24-hour liquor store and fast food operation that immediately abuts on three sides these single-family homes and condominiums. The Planning Commission looked at these plans, this proposal, and said yes on paper to many of these items that checked some boxes. Where it didn't meet acceptable criteria like lighting, drive-through, and operating hours, Sheetz said, no, we remain firm on these factors. And that's as if to say, this is what we must have, it's part of our operating model. Well, this operating model is fine for freeway interchange, but not for an area of solid, stable homes with home values of $450,000 to $500,000 and up. So don't tarnish our neighborhood for the sake of a business that has capitalized on passing vehicles, sells deep-fried foods and salted processed snacks, which they naively call groceries. They want to delay this meeting, hoping that we will go away and forget about Sheetz. But you are our representatives, you are our voice, you are our government. Most of you have kindly responded to our cards and emails. As constituents, we thank you for that. Farmington Hills is an admired, well-established community. Our government has made it so. Instead of saying, hey, Farmington Hills, we really like your community, will you have us? How can we fit in? Sheetz says, no, this is how it has to be for us, this is what works for us. They can put perfume on it, and they can call it what they want, it's still going to be a 24-hour White Castle that sells liquor and gas. This experienced Planning Commissioner, Mr. Tralfollet, after reviewing the plans on paper, he looked beyond the paper and had the common sense to vote no and said it's not compatible with our surrounding area. The council and the government, in its wisdom, has already determined that our city, through a new city ordinance, has more than enough auto repair shops, car washes, and gas stations. Let's stick with your vision and foresight and vote no on this proposal. And I thank you for your time and for staying late this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parven. Margaret Keys-Howard to be followed by Joan Teresa Gebhardt.
I was going to say good evening, but I think I have to say almost good morning. We've been here several hours. My name is Margaret Keys-Howard. I am the president of the Enclave of Heatherwood, which is on Sylvan Circle, and we are just next to the Heatherwood Condo Association, right of, just 1/8 of a mile north of the property located, proposed location. I'm the president. I do have a few members that have hung in here with me. Thank you, residents, for coming. We also, by commission of our own Board of Directors, have unanimously opposed to this to come to our neighborhood. And for some of the reasons that were already said, I won't belabor those, some of them that have not been said, including the actual yellow bus stop that stops right there at Beach Hill, because I walk a little boy from around the corner because his mother has to go to work at 6:00 a.m. I walk my dog with those kids to the bus stop that would have to cross right there. Those kids would be subject to whatever is going on there. And a lot of things, I've been to six Sheetz, by the way, including in Pennsylvania, Baltimore County, North Carolina, and I'm not impressed. There's nothing of the food that I would want my children or grandchildren to have and is subject to what you would say nasty food that you pick up at convenience if you're doing a road trip. And it doesn't fit in the compatibility at all, even with the aesthetics of what we have done in our community in Farmington Hills. And by the way, we have won 10 years in a row beautification certificates from the city of Farmington Hills because we take pride in it. It's a lot of dog walkers that walk up and down that corridor. I am one of them, but there are hundreds of them, and we take pride. We pick up behind ourselves, and we pick up even in that corner. So the demise of that area, as it was described today, is not actually true. While I do think we should have an audience where we can dialogue a little bit more about what could be there, I know you're not dialoguing today. I think that we should take some time to that. Sheetz is not appropriate for us, and we don't want it there. And they have never attempted to reach us, other than the annoying text messages that I would get about trying to get some Sheetz wings for the Lions game on Saturday. I was appalled that they had my phone number. But anyway, I hope you do not postpone this because it's just a ploy to try to do something else that would distract. But I can tell you this, we have galvanized this community because of this, and I am committed, without a threat, I am committed to work with my community now more vigorously, and I am asking for our elected officials to be more conscientious about what their decisions are today because we intend to fight this. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Teresa Gebhardt, followed by Ann Logan. Good evening.
I live in Pine Knolls Condominium Association. I'm here to represent all you young people and all of your descendants. I was 83 years old on the 11th of January.
Happy birthday.
Don't approve the Sheetz or any other gas station at Middlebelt and 12 Mile Roads because there are impacts if you do that that you won't like and I won't like. Such a business does not enhance our physical environment or our daily living circumstances. It does not, and it's been demonstrated by all of us here, that that's how we consider this business. We don't want it. Now, one of the things people haven't mentioned is what will we do with the homeless people that are coming our way in the next couple of years? We're going to have them. If you have a 24-hour warm place and cool place, what are we going to do with the homeless people that try to live in there? What are we going to do? You see, we have to have, we have to have a different viewpoint these days about what we live with and how we live and how we treat one another. And it is imperative that we care for one another and that we provide healthy living for each other. We have properties that can't, practically cannot be sold. There's one right across from the area we're talking. It's empty. Why can't, why is it empty? There are other empty places, including the one that consists of 35 and 1 acres of property. Something wrong there. Okay, we can't just be done, sold, anything done to it without some kind of remediation or fixing of the soil, the water, the pipes, everything. We need to do those things, but most of us can't afford to. So what will we do? We're going to become very dependent on the very wealthy, and that's okay.
Thank you.
I just want to say one more thing. I think we need a Citizens Committee to determine what the people of our community want to have in the area that we're talking about that had the restaurant. Can we not reclaim it to benefit our community? Amen.
Thank you. Ann Logan to be followed by Horatio Bennett, please.
I'm a 26-year resident of Farmington Hills. I'm also the vice president right now of our condo association at Pine Knolls. I've also was the president for six years previously. I've seen so many changes in this community as far as businesses coming in. I am really tired of seeing all fast food places coming in. I'd like to see individual-owned restaurants and other businesses coming in. I really appreciate the farmhouse and what they have, and having independent businesses coming in that really contribute to our community. It's one of the things that really makes us a community. I'd like to see something else developed on that area and maybe a few other things, and maybe even a small park for everyone in our community to go to. We have nothing in our area where we can actually meet up and do things. People go to the church property behind that, but that is their property. We need something just within our own community that would be of benefit to all of us, and that's basically what I have to say. I'm really not impressed with what Sheetz has in bringing in that gas station into the community. I am highly concerned of when they dig into the ground because all the older homes around this whole area are all on well water. So basically, in digging, putting in the tanks and everything else of basically hurting the aquifer there, and then also, if they go under, if they were approved, are they going to dig up those tanks? Are they going to remediate the ground, or are they just going to leave us with a brownfield? So I am very concerned if something like this goes through, what is going to happen and what is going to be the ecological impact later on? Because those are very large tanks. It's basically the same type of development that you have for a Costco for the number of tanks and the size of those to go in the ground, and that will have an impact on the well water in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Horatio Bennett to be followed by A. Samuel Dorcho. Horatio Bennett? Mr. Dorcho?
Thank you.
Will be followed by Christine Needles.
I'll try to be brief. My name is Sam Dorchen. I live in the same condo project that Ann Logan just spoke of. I'm an architect. I was the project architect on the high school close by and a few apartment projects. I have the feeling that this is the wrong use for this site, and rather than keep you longer, I want to second everything that Ann said.
Thank you. Christine Needles to be followed by Oditha Bennett. How about Dennis Latner? Could be on Village, yep.
There we go.
Thank you. To be followed by Hank Murawski.
Good, almost morning, mayor and distinguished council members of the Farmington Hills Late Night Show. Going to take a different tact. Our Sheetz correspondent, I think it's Alex, made a statement, profound, I think, tonight to say that they were a capture of traffic and not a generator. So let's go with that. Suspect in deadly shooting at Sheetz gas station found guilty of murder. Sheetz add security dogs to some North Carolina stores amid crime concerns. In December, Sergeant Phillips Nick died after attempting to intervene in a robbery at Colfax, North Carolina Sheetz. Roughly three weeks earlier, a thief stole three vehicles, or stole vehicles, from two Greensboro Sheetz, according to the outlet. Greensboro police are now investigating a two-car jacking broad daylight reported within an hour of each other at two different locations. Greensboro man robbed at gunpoint, and Sheetz speaks out. Man accused of kidnapping driver assaulting multiple customers at the Everett Sheetz. Woman choked in Bloomsburg Sheetz parking lot, Scottstownshire police. Hagerstown man charged in armed robbery that put Sheetz employees in fear for their lives. Shots fired outside Prince William Sheetz late New Year's Eve. PA man kidnapped driver assaulted Sheetz customers, police. Greensville police investigating shooting at Sheetz along Moye Boulevard. Two men shot at Spotsylvania County Sheetz in apparent hate crime, authorities say. Teens charged after stabbing at Sheetz in Larksville. Man arrested twice in eight days at the same Altoona Sheetz store. That's the home ground for corporate. Two men shot at Spotsylvania County Sheetz in apparent hate crime, authorities say. Gunshot victim sounded North Columbus Sheetz parking lot. Two suspects allegedly robbed at the Sheetz in Chesterfield and Sheetz across from North Carolina Wesley's Yan robbed. These guys even know this because they, last year, submitted to a congressional committee that said the following. However, 24/7 operations also pose some unique challenges. There are times of the days our stores will be only business, the only business open in a community. This means the type and number of crimes that affect our stores are significantly different than many other retailers. We certainly have experienced the impact of the nation's rise in the crime number. We're not alone. Our experiences are similar to what our entire industry is facing in increasing in shoplifting, robbing, and vehicle theft. This creates a challenging environment for our employees as customers who never know if one of these incidents will escalate into something into a violent criminal act. This is not a place, you guys have said it tonight, it doesn't fit across the street from one of two of the oldest RA1A subdivisions, of which I've been a resident for 39 years. I'm asking for your vote to do what's right for our environment, for our city. This is not a fit, not at this location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hank Murawski to be followed by Craig Rochak.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff, good evening. My name's Hank Murawski. I live on Village Lane in Wood Creek. Wood Creek is, and I'm here, actually, as the president of the Wood Creek Civic Association. Wood Creek is a subdivision with 300 and more residents bounded by 12 Mile, 13 Mile, Middlebelt, and almost all the way over to Inkster as well. This proposal has generated many issues and questions about what we're doing here. And I think the questions are mostly self-answering. As an example, do we want another gas station? We know there's gas stations everywhere. Do we want high-density lighting all night long, forever? The rest of the areas, businesses in that area close about 10:00. Do we want more congestion, more noise in our area? Do we want, here just mentioned by James, possible crime draw? There is another question that I don't think has gotten much play here, and that is that of benefits. And our PUD ordinance here actually asks this question as well, and that is, what benefits does this PUD provide to the city? Okay? What benefits does it provide to the city? Okay, what benefits does it provide to the city and the neighborhoods around as well? We saw the Sheets benefits slide up here, and when you look at it, it was like we're going to, it's new shrubbery and new sidewalk, you know, there's a fence along Middle Belt and things like that. These are not benefits. These are basically attributes and characteristics of what they're going to build for us. I think this proposal, in my view, does not provide any measurable tangible benefits, certainly not to my neighborhood, and I don't believe to the city as well, you know, as a whole. And I think this is something that you want to consider in your deliberations, you know, for your decision tonight. If you go to a Realtor and say, you know, I'm looking for a new house, what can you, how can you help me? And the first thing they're going to say, well, it's location, location, location. And for this location here at Twelve Mile and Middle Belt, this is not the location for a Sheets. So please consider that in your deliberations. Thank you.
Craig Rochak, to be followed by Michael Madigan.
Good morning, Ma, good morning, Mayor Rich.
Good morning.
And esteemed members of the council, thank you for hearing me. I provided you with information previously, and I thank you for your responses, although I didn't hear my name as one of those people who was against it, my wife and I. My name is Craig Rochak. I live, we live on Wellington in Wood Creek. I am a more than sixty-year resident of this township and then ultimately this city. Forty years in this neighborhood, we decided to bring and grow up, grow our family here. I love this city. I'm a product of the city, the community and the school system. So I have a pretty good perspective on what, why this is such a great place. And as I listen to all of this, I'm kind of wondering why we're still talking about it, quite frankly. Dr. Bruce did a great job of summarizing the PUD issue. I think that can just be rinsed and repeated, and it goes right here. It's the same question. This is not about Sheets at all. It has nothing to do with Sheets, but Sheets has highlighted the problem of bringing something like this into our community, into our neighborhood. And that's what I don't appreciate about it. It's not the right adjustment to the zoning. It's not the right scenario. We'd love to have something for, in the place of Genopolis, but let's get the right thing. We did it at Sarah Fisher, I believe, and I hope, and we can do it at this location as well. And so I respectfully ask all of you as our elected representatives to do the right thing that everyone has asked you to do. Deny this, don't kick the can down the road. This is wrong. We don't need it. It's not about Sheets. They could be a wonderful company. I don't know, but that's not today's discussion. Today's discussion is Twelve Mile and Middle Belt. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Michael Madigan, to be followed by James Geisling. Mr. Madigan? Okay, James Geisling? Okay. Trevor Duke, to be followed by Paula A. Terza. Paula, you're here? Okay. Good evening.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for hearing me. I work in commercial real estate, and I want to speak because I don't think the public realizes how much easier it is to get a no than it is to get a yes, especially with hundreds of residents. Very easy for people to have one thing they don't like, and soon you have an echo chamber of no's. If you had to ask the surrounding two miles about every project you had at work, you may not hear all positive responses. What if a majority of people didn't like what your company was doing? I see the objections to Schaefer, and I can see why those lots are currently run down. I worry these no's are holding back our city. Saying no to the Caldian Center, saying no to Schaefer, I think there's opposition to the American House Development before Sheets. If someone has a dream use, that they really think they could get the neighborhood behind without any objections, that is a profitable endeavor, please find me after and tell me what it is, as well as explain when they think that will happen. In real estate, it is known that a free market will allow properties to evolve to their highest and best use. I am not addressing this to the board, but to the community at large. Continuing to say no will leave us with blight and will lower our property values in the short term by locking these properties into degrading from neglect, unable to be redeveloped, and long term by being known as a city that new businesses avoid for being fear, excuse me, for fear of being rejected in meetings after midnight like this. The world is roaring back from COVID, and I look north of where Farmington Hills ends, and I see an explosion of growth on Orchard Lake. Beautiful apartments, Tesla Service Center, restaurants, this is great positive growth. We can have high standards and require lights and drive lanes to conform, but blocking businesses is harmful. I purchased a home in Wood Creek because I like my big lot, I like being on a well, and I like being in a quiet traditional neighborhood. I too like walking to farmhouse. I like Hank, my HOA board guy. I can say that there is a block, oh, excuse me, as the neighborhood turns over and has lots of young couples moving in, I can say that there is a block of young families who look at this development very favorably and want it to happen. Some young families that are not here solely because they have young children at home. There is a compromise to be had between retaining a quiet life, but also not withering on the vine by not allowing any new businesses to our area. I wonder fifty years ago, people in this room were wringing their hands about Genopolis going in and perhaps complaining that there was too much traffic, too much light, too much noise. Of course, Genopolis became a beloved neighborhood fixture. I consider myself pro-growth, but I would likely object to an obvious environmental hazard such as adding a tire incinerator, nor would I encourage a problem use like an adult video store. There is an old logical problem called the secretary problem or the porta potty problem, where in looking for the best candidate, you can interview as many secretaries as you would like or open the door of as many porta potties as you would like, but if you decide to pass on one good one, but maybe not great, or a clean but not sparkling porta potty, you lose that opportunity forever.
Thank you, sir.
If we continue to turn away grade-A operators and developers, I worry what will end up going up in this spot.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Paula Terza, to be followed by Susan Hensley.
Hi, I live in Wood Creek, and I love my neighborhood. And I just agree with everybody. I hope all of you are listening because none of us want this. I don't know where any of you live, but if you lived anywhere near Middle Belt and Twelve Mile, you would not want this either. Again, we don't need another gas station. And Farmington Hills is the second safest city in the state of Michigan, and we're the thirtieth in the nation, and I want to keep it that way. And I think if this shit's gas station, whatever restaurant goes up, I know I said it wrong, but I just, I just don't think it's a good fit. And a couple of my neighbors couldn't stay late because this has been going on too long, and I just don't see why we're talking about this either. I agree with everybody here who doesn't want this. I don't want this. So please, please listen to all of us because we really don't want this. And I hope you have a good night.
Thank you. Susan Hensley? Were you Susan? Okay. Ron Evans, to be followed by Clarence Norfleet? Thank you. And is Mr. Norfleet here? Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ron Evans. I live in Timbercrest on Winterset Circle. I'll keep my comments short as my hat says, less is more. I oppose the approval of the Sheets at this location for many of the reasons that have already been stated, but I would just ask one question. If the planning commission did any kind of study or collected any kind of data on putting a Sheets in this kind of neighborhood? I know you can't answer that right now, but I would ask that question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clarence Norfleet, to be followed by Joseph Williams.
Hello. My name is Clarence Norfleet, little mayor and city councilman. I oppose, I agree with a lot, I agree with a lot of what's been said already, so I'm not going to take up a lot of time. I've been, I live in the Timbercrest subdivision, and I've been here for over twenty years. When I moved here, not long after that, we had some problem with the 7-Eleven and the mobile, the mobiles still late also. And that's gone. We don't need another problem. Sheets might be a Fortune five-hundred company, been chosen by People Magazine for the one of the best places to work for, but it's just not the place for it. You're going to have a billboard sign on the freeway saying where it's located, so they're going to exit on Orchard Lake Road and come down Twelve Mile. In the summer, you're going to have crack rockets and everything else coming down Twelve Mile, waking everybody up and the neighborhood. So I totally disagree with, I totally disagree with Sheets being placed at Twelve Mile and Middle Belt. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joseph Williams, to be followed by Joan Williams.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem, and good evening, City Council. I've got to keep myself together, but it's getting kind of late, so I'm going to be very brief. I agree with everybody tonight. Sheets probably is a very good organization, but to the point, the main point we want to get away from, the location, the location is not the appropriate place for this establishment. There's other places they can find that's more suitable. We do not need anything twenty-four hours open at that intersection. It's a very quiet neighborhood. We go to sleep, it's cool, that's it, no nonsense, no mess. City council people, we voted you in to represent our interests. We're asking you tonight, when you make this vote, to take all that into consideration. You are our ears, you are our representative, represent us. Do not ignore, do not disrespect, and stay on point and find some other location for this company, but remember tonight, Middle Belt and Twelve Mile is not on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joan Williams, to be followed by PG.
Good evening, everybody, or good morning, whatever it is, but thank you, thank you for staying up. Thank you for listening to us. And I want to say a couple of things. The first thing is that Sheets, we don't hate you. We're not angry at you. We, we're not disrespecting you. My son works for Pepsi, and he delivers to your Romulus store. He brags about you. He said, Mom, it's a good place, but guess what? This is just not the place. And so I'm reminded that in everything you do, get thy an understanding. So I think as I listen to all these people speak, Sheets has an understanding. Whether they nod their head or not, they understand that this is not the place for them. But we don't want to mistreat them. We want to pray that they find another place, but Twelve Mile and Middle Belt would not be it. And another thing I was taught by my mom, watch whose Sheets you get under. We don't want Sheets here. We, we wish you guys well, City Council. You are our voice. You're listening to us. I'm watching your faces, you're hearing. Now you've got to do the right thing. You've got to do the right thing because we're depending on you. If we could stop it, we would, but it's in your hands. God bless you all. Thank you for allowing me to speak. God bless you, Sheets.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. PG, to be followed by George. Starts with an S. No, go ahead.
And all of God's people said, amen. Well, the people are speaking. The citizens are at the top of the organizational chart. And as Ms. Williams said, we don't dislike Sheets, we don't hate their organization. I never heard of Sheets. And I'm originally from Brooklyn, New York. Never heard of Sheets, never passed a Sheets. But as she said, the location is not the right location. What I would like to see Sheets do is go up north. Our Michiganders up north don't have economic development. They're basically just highways and lots. Sheets would be perfect up there. Economic development, jobs, they got all the space they need to make a big place like that. But Twelve Mile and Middle Belt is not the right spot. I was hoping that they would have tried to get in contact with the Genopolis family and say, look at here, how about if we rebuild you a nice restaurant with the beautiful red, red is my favorite color. My piano is red, my toilet and sink is red, my washer and dryer is red. I'd have a red house if I could. But it's just not the right spot. Somebody left their glasses case up here? Okay. The other thing that I wanted to say, when we're talking to our elected officials, we just want to make sure that you're listening, but you can't oppress the people and their actions. This is not a bad thing. When we had to hear people banging on the glass about a ceasefire deal, it's not fair, but I get it, and I understand. I really do. What will it take for this council to see that we just don't want this? So if you're not listening to us, and if you don't believe us when we tell you that this is a bad location, there's an election coming up. And I'm going to just put a pin in it right there. There's an election coming up, and we're watching. Who's going to be on the naughty list and who's going to be on the nice list? And the nice list is to say no. Say no.
Thank you. George, followed by Jeff Goodman. I'm sorry, sir, I just couldn't read your last name.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I hope you have a long day, you have a long day. I started nine o'clock this morning till eight. Anyway, I live at twenty, I live in twenty-nine or ten Orion Court. So Sheet, if it's going to open, it's going to face my front door and my garage. I'm going to lose my privacy. I'm going to lose the first of my kids they walk in the street. God, there'll be no more privacy. And my experience standing off at Twelve and Middle Belt in Orion Court with the kids between seven-thirty till nine o'clock, it's very, lot of traffic. We don't need more traffic. And same afternoon, three o'clock till four o'clock is lot of traffic, lot of traffic in the street. We don't need Sheet. I am here to say aloud as I can, no gas station in this corner. I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you very much. Thank you, every single one. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last card we have is for Jeff Goodman. Good morning.
All right. Mayor, council members, I satisfied a business obligation I had tonight, so I apologize. I sent you all a last-minute email with my views, so apologies in advance for double-tapping. I still wanted to come and speak since this was going on later. My name's Jeff Goodman. I'm a Wood Creek resident. I grew up in Farmington Hills, lived in DC for a decade, ultimately came home where I belong. My wife and I immediately got involved with communities. My wife's a teacher. I help coach, you know, the wrestling team at Farmington Hills Steam Academy, so we're very in tune with the community, and we feel that we want what's best for the community. We do have a positive view for Sheets gas station to go in. I think that while plenty of people have proposed saying alternative ideas could exist, this is quantifiable, this can go in, this is something that I think would be a net benefit for the community. It would give an additional convenience to the residents. I know that there's been endless talk of other gas stations. I think that with competition, we would get better products potentially, better pricing and closer options to us. If we consider this has a much more modern design than some of the other options that are available, and this is appealing for people to move to Farmington Hills and potentially have additional resources to them to shop for convenience items that they need. I think that Sheets having a hybrid with more offerings than just gas is also a benefit for the residents that other gas stations may not have. The, what else do we have here? For the safety and crime deterrence, I think that, again, having a well-lit area that's close proximity to a police station and a relationship with law enforcement, in my eyes, I think would eyes, I think would not be a crime haven where many are describing it as that. Since many of the other speeches are putting forth anecdotal examples, I would also like to share some anecdotal examples. We had an emergency room visit last week with our youngest daughter, and on our drive home, you know, there wasn't food options available at 11:30. I thought that would have been really nice. Personally, I am a night owl, I'm up later, I would utilize something like this. I have a half dozen friends that live in the neighborhood that would also support something like this. I think on top of the jobs, there would also be additional commerce where you have people in my generation that would utilize this, and potentially with services Uber Eats, DoorDash, and others that would provide stimulus for the community and jobs outside of what Sheets would provide. So I also see that as a benefit. The Sheets complex would provide a lot of convenience. Another anecdotal example, daughter ran I-tylenol in the middle of the night, right? And we didn't have it, and my wife said, let's just wait, right? Building off of the emergency room visit. Could have gone up to Sheets and gotten some medicine late at night. I know that's an anecdotal example. Other anecdotal examples were shared, so thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. I love being part of this community.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we heard testimony from nearly 50 people. We have no more blue cards. This public hearing is now ended. Counsel? Yes?
No, I want to just make a few comments, I'll be very brief. We were listening. Council was listening to you tonight, and I guarantee you the council's gonna make the right decision tonight. And I want to thank you for coming. You thanked us for being here. We want to thank you. This is very important to you, and it's very important to us, too. I just want you to know that, and you'll get what you want. I'm gonna vote denial anyways.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bruce.
Thank you. Lots of great comment from everybody here, both in person and all the hundreds of emails I think we all got were just really good comments on both sides. But first off, I want to thank Sheets for their proposal. You obviously have a great business model. You're very successful, and you're successful for a reason, and that's because you obviously offer a great product that people want, and you're growing, and so congratulations on all of that. I used to live very close to this side. I lived in Forest Brook Hills, Pebblebrook Estates, that some other people lived in that are living that made comments tonight. But I do think that this is too big for that area. I really do. I just think that it is more like a truck stop. And, you know, but beyond that, we as a council had a discussion a couple of months ago when we changed our ordinances about regulating gas stations in the city better, and really trying to control that more. And I think we do have too many gas stations, and I, we already have two gas stations on that corner. And I think two on that corner are enough. And, you know, yeah, I don't like the abandoned old Genopolis there, but again, eventually, I think if this, if this doesn't go in there, something will go in there, something more appropriate. We have approved in the past a senior facility that, it fell through for whatever reasons, so I think it does show that there's an interest in this corner and this property, and so eventually it will be developed again. I'm not in favor of tabling this to another night, because I think it would be dishonest for me to tell them to go back and rework this proposal when, no matter what they come back with, I couldn't support anyway, because it would be a gas station again. And to me, a gas station in any form, I just can't approve or can't vote for, because again, I think that the danger here is, and I think the young woman who talked, who was the business instructor, said what I was also thinking, in that if this gas station comes in, they're, they're a behemoth company. And, and they're gonna come in and they're gonna be, I think there's gonna be a good chance that they could put one or both of the other gas stations out of business on that corner, and then we'll have one or two more empty businesses sitting on that corner as well. So I think that that's just more reasons that I can't vote for this development. I don't want to see another gas station there. I hope Sheets can find a better location in our city. I think it would be great somewhere else in our city, but again, along a thorough, a major thoroughfare, but, but not at this corner. This is too residential. And it's, you know, I, again, I lived many, many years just down the street from this. I know that area very well, and I, I love the area. I think it's a beautiful area, and I want it to stay residential. Again, I don't want this kind of large company coming into that residential, quiet type of area and being a 24-hour operation. I just think it's really out of character with the overall area. So I don't want a table. I'd rather just vote tonight, vote it down, and not have to have them go back and reinvent this in some way, only to come back and, you know, again, not be able to support it. So that's, that's my feeling, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I have some things I think I can address from the citizens, and some things I think that you all will probably address.
So, sir, this, this is our time to, to talk.
Understood, thank you.
We're going to, thank you. If, if council has questions, we'll be happy to, to call you back up, though.
But Madam Mayor, if we would have the opportunity to address some of the comments that were made, I mean, we listened to hours of comments about this that were...
Can we, can we speak first and then?
Well, if decisions are being made, we would like to have input with respect to what, you know, was said.
Mayor, the correct format is that after the public hearing, they hear from the public, and then they have an opportunity to rebut.
Okay, fair. All right. Please.
Thank you very much. So thank you very much again for having us. Thank you for everyone for speaking this evening. I did want to address some of the things, but first and foremost, as a councilperson was mentioning, we are seeking a postponement this evening. We formally requested that earlier in the process here. We are diligently working through some things that the planning commission requested that we change as part of our site plan, including some of the things that some of the residents brought up this evening, including lighting, for example. We're still working through fixing up those plans to comply with the ordinance. We're also working on some enhancements to the plan that we think you will be very happy to see and would be very encouraged to have a conversation about. So we're hoping to be able to come forward at a later date to introduce to you those enhancements and additional benefits that we can bring to this PUD. But I wanted to touch base on some of the broad strokes that some folks brought up this evening. So first, I wanted to discuss safety. So our stores feature a first-in-class security system and procedures to go along with it. You know, we've worked for over 70 years to gain the trust of our customers and create a safe space. To that point, we've heard stories of people who use our lots as exchange points for marketplace exchanges, like Facebook Marketplace, eBay, that sort of thing, and also for custody exchanges in between parents. People know Sheets value safety. We're a top 100 workplace, and we've been that way for the past 10 years. Employees in general, I would not think would want to work in an establishment that is not a safe place to work. You can Google crime at national retailer, even local retailer XYZ, and you're going to come up with something. Sheets is not an attractor of crime. We often have policies and procedures that prevent it. We work with law enforcement to help prevent it, and when crime happens, to help mitigate future perpetrators. I also want to talk about traffic. So traffic was a big thing. Remember, convenience stores are convenient, they're not a destination. We capture a majority of our customers from existing traffic, not from generating additional traffic. We just pick up that customer that's already driving by and put them right back out on the road. And our TIS, our Traffic Impact Study that we did and submitted to the city supports that exact statement. Another thing is, why do we need another gas station? So that question is generally rooted in an anti-competitive spirit that's bad for the consumer. The convenience store industry is massive, and it's one of the most competitive in the country, with over 125,000 C-stores. Many folks around Michigan, who if you pay attention to the Facebook groups for the Farmington Hills community, are very excited about Sheets coming to Michigan. There are plenty of people on those pages, and we heard from some of them this evening about us coming here. That's because we, you know, we bring about an exciting offer, we bring about those clean facilities, we bring all sorts of things in a well-run establishment. But that does bring up a concern that some folks brought up about other businesses going under. While it may happen, it is very unlikely. You know, we are coming into Michigan, it's a new territory, it's a new market for us. But in the other six states that we operate in, almost 800 locations, new folks come into those territories all the time, and they work out great. We all thrive together, and we all create a great offer for our consumer. And then finally, I just wanted to reiterate some of those, excuse me, some of those benefits that I talked about earlier. So the architecture, the enhanced green space, remember, 16,000 square feet of additional green space compared to what exists today. Reduced impervious area, increased setbacks, so that's increased buffering between us and our residential neighbors by up to 50% in some cases. Enhanced landscaping. Our landscaping is all professionally designed, it's irrigated, it's well-maintained. Remember, we're not a franchise, we're 100% wholly owned by the Sheets family. So we take, we cut no corners. Everything is top-notch. Pedestrian access, we're improving upon the existing conditions that exist today. We're investing $8.5 million just in construction costs here, which is also an indication of we feel there, that we will be successful and everyone else will be successful here. We're not going to spend $8.5 million unless we feel that that is an opportunity. We'll have increased tax assessments, and then all of our donation stuff, Sheets for the kids, Special Olympics, the food bank donations every single week, and so much more. Again, we're asking for a postponement this evening to work out all the conditions of planning commission that we made at the planning commission, and to further enhance our offer, and we think you'll be excited to see it.
And I just want to clarify one, one last thing that Alex said. We are asking for a postponement because we have ideas that would enhance this. I don't want that to allow you to think we don't meet the criteria, because we do. The planning commission determined that, we have met the criteria, we, we support their recommendation and agree with that. And we, so there is more that we'd like to do, and we can add to that, and that's part of what's been discussed, and we're, we're looking forward to that. Also, one final thought, as you consider the, the decision, remember, this property is owned for multifamily. So many of the concerns we heard were traffic, intense use, light. That will have as much or more than what this facility would have. So, and it would also not be within the setbacks or have the same open space that this would have. So when you're comparing this site to something else, you can't compare it to nothing. It would need to be something. Because if it's compared to nothing, then the site's essentially been rendered undevelopable. And if that's where we are, then that's something we have to take into consideration as well. In any case, that's all I had. I appreciate your consideration and everyone's time. It's been a long night. So, thank you.
Counsel?
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't want to spar or debate with Mr. Lennon. He has provided you his legal views in, you know, concerning this matter, and his viewpoint, perhaps, of what the planning commission did or did not do. I just want to make it clear that the planning commission made a recommendation to City Council, and it made preliminary findings as part of that recommendation. You, City Council, are the ones who make the decision. No decision has been made to approve that. And, and I just want to make that very clear, because it didn't sound like that's what I was hearing. I was hearing that the planning commission already made a determination, that they met all the criteria. That has not, that, the planning commission made a recommendation, you make the final decision. There are many criteria in the ordinance as well that talk about discretion of the City Council, that talk about use of the property, that talk about the benefits, and other matters in terms of the intent of the, of the PUD process, which brings into consideration things like compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and so forth. Those are in the intent section and purpose section. And the ordinance does talk about having to comply with all provisions or meet the, all aspects of the PUD ordinance. It's not just the items identified as the criteria necessarily. That's one part of the ordinance. There are many other parts of the ordinance to consider, and I think council knows this. I just want to make it clear for you that there's much more to this than a simple indication that the planning commission said it's okay, and any sort of implication that you are therefore bound by that decision. It indicates that the planning commission decision helps them to decide whether they want to go forward with this, which they have done. It doesn't say you're bound by that decision.
Yeah, and I would just, just to follow up, thank you very much. The planning commission did recommend approval. That's what they voted. And we're, the planning commission did recommend approval based on their findings, and we're encouraging you to follow their recommendation.
Madam Mayor, we're not here to debate as lawyers, please.
So, so, okay, we've heard from our Mayor Protem, we've heard from Dr. Bruce, Mr. Bridges.
Thank you. Just wanted to just point out that our previous proposal before council, the planning commission had recommended approval for that as well. And so this council looks at the planning commission as our source of evaluating proposal, but ultimate authority is with the City Council. I wanted to, to, to say that we appreciate your interest in Farmington Hills. I strongly believe that the, the overwhelming opposition to your proposal is representative of the fact that there's a strong belief that your proposal is incompatible with that 12 Mile and Middlebelt area. Again, I know that you spent a lot of time and effort trying to develop that, be part of that 12 Mile and Middlebelt area. However, given the current zoning there, and given, given the fact that what's around that community, around that area regarding residential community, it's been there for a long period of time. I've been on the City Council for 16 years. I pride myself on making sure to maintain the character of Farmington Hills neighborhoods. It's very important to the city's future, and I just think your proposal at this time does not, does not, is not compatible with that, that particular location. This council, again, understand the planning commissioner's role in this process, but it's our role, our, our authority is to review the, the planning commission notes, take testimony in public, what we did today for two or three, four hours today regarding this, and there's a lot of opposition to your proposal. And I just think strongly that is not compatible with the area there right now, that that particular area is not the area where a Sheet should be located at. Again, we welcome your interest in Farmington Hills, but that location is not the way you should be located at, might be my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Sure. First of all, thank you to all the residents who have spent all night here, and it, it's just, it's great to have your, your interest here in, in an issue that is truly a city government issue. And so thank you for all of your comments tonight and for, for sticking with it. Also, thank you to Sheets for being here tonight as well, and I just want to say, you know, I have nothing personally against Sheets. I've been to Sheets out in Pennsylvania, out, just, it was off the exit, off the turnpike. And I agree, it's, it was a really nice place. But again, it was off of an expressway or a turnpike. And that gets me to the issue I kept hearing over and over tonight, which we actually talked about in the last PUD as well, is the intensity. I just believe that this project is too intense of a project. It's not compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. You know, a lot of single-family residential, you heard from all of them tonight. I believe, again, thank you for your interest. Again, nothing against Sheets, but this is not the right place. I think it should be off an expressway or a major thoroughfare in a large, a large 24 operation like this should be in a large commercial business district, not in a small, either a, not in a RC2 multifamily residential, or not even in a business, a neighborhood business district, because the use is too intense. I agree with everything that's been said. I just want to add one other thing, because it's been brought up tonight about the marketplace and competition, and we shouldn't stifle competition. And that's not the American way. And let me tell you, I am not opposed to competition, but I do believe that gas stations are unique. This is not a restaurant that could just be turned into something else. Hey, we've seen, those of you who have lived here as long as I have, you have seen two Bob Evans. Guess what? They've been turned into other uses, other restaurants or completely other office use, and it works, you can do that. But with gas stations, that is not as feasible, because you will have large fuel tanks in the ground. And most other types of businesses are very fearful of redeveloping gas stations, because they don't want to deal with the fear of possible contaminations. And the law is always changing on that in Michigan. Well, it hasn't, but it almost did. And so not only are... And so not only are other types of developers or businesses fearful of that, but also just the configuration of a gas station makes it much harder to redevelop than, say, a small office building or another type of restaurant. So then indeed, if there is competition and you put the other business, other gas stations out of business, or they put you out of business, either way, we are stuck with abandoned gas stations that are really hard to redevelop because of those fuel pumps and tanks in the ground. So for that reason, I can't support it, and I'm in favor of denying it tonight only because, to be fair to all the residents, one, I don't want them to have to come back again, but truly, unless you take away the 24 operation and you take away the gas station, I can't approve it. And that is your business model. So no matter what changes you make, you're still going to have those two aspects of the proposal. And so it's, I can't, I still won't be approving it. So I don't want you to continue to waste your time and money on that site when maybe it should be best spent looking for a different site that might be more compatible.
Thank you. Ms. Boloware, did you want to say anything? Mr. Aldred?
Yes, yes. Thanks every, to everyone for hanging out till almost 1 o'clock in the, in the morning. I'm an early-go-to-bed type of person, so this is really a bit of challenging, you know, evening. I like to say, you know, thank you to Sheets. I had never heard of you until just you decided to come into our wonderful city, and the concept is really, really great. My only, not my only, but one of the challenges that I have is, is, you know, under the PUD process, one of the things that we think about is what in, in relief from the ordinances that are already, you know, on our, on our books, what value or what are you bringing? What benefit are you bringing to our community? And I really can't find any. I know that you had mentioned competition. Competition is good. I think usually competition keeps prices in check, but currently, we have over 26 gas stations in the city of Farmington Hills, 38, which is the most competitive in any city in southeast Michigan and probably throughout the state of Michigan. So I don't see how that is going to bring any additional value to our city by allowing or approving an additional gas station at that corner. I have a personal reason, but I'm trying to keep that out of my decision because I do live in Timbercrest, and several Timbercrest residents come, did come up and speak against it. I know that at night, when the other, most places are closed, not a lot of traffic is going down 12th Avenue at that time, at that time of the night. You know, it's pretty silent there, and I don't know how you could capture any additional traffic because those individuals are usually, they're just not there at night. We don't have a lot of traffic coming, going east or west or on 12-mile road. So, but taking my personal opinion out of it, because it impacts me as a Timbercrest resident, I struggle with determining what benefits you're going to offer our community by having a 24-hour, highly-lit, Bigfoot, you know, operation in that particular space embedded in a residential area, which there's not a lot really going on at that type of night. And even if you have, I don't think very few people who live in that community will be seeking a fast-food, you know, type meal at two, two or three o'clock in the morning. And for me, I'd rather take, I'm not going to approve this, and I'd rather that we take a vote tonight so that we can, once and for all, decide that this is for this particular location. Currently, there are also, which I, I think I should, I should remind myself is that, you know, in that location, we have some independent businesses other than the gas stations. We have the Farmhouse, which sells coffee, along with light meals and ice cream that people go all the time. But then really next to that is we have Belavita, that's been in the area for years, that sell beverages and, you know, light refreshments there. So even looking at that, you're not bringing anything extra, you know, to that corner so like, that I could say this is a worthwhile project for our city. Maybe there is some other location in the city of Farmington Hills, but there's still 26 gas, or someone said 30, 30-some gas stations that's already here. I don't know how many homes can refuel, you know, that often, that would require more than that number. But it could be, you know. Someone mentioned Grand River and Middle Belt. That might be a great location that you can look into to determine that's feasible, you know, for your operation. But tonight, I'd rather go ahead, vote, don't postpone it. My mind is not going to change, even with any additional enhancements, as long as it's a gas station. I don't think that's the right spot for the gas station. There's already two gas stations on that corner. And as Councilmember Knoll has mentioned, the fact that, let's just say, one of those gas stations have to close, then there's a brownfield potential, and it's really hard to develop, you know, those properties if they cease to operate as a gas station because of the underground contamination that may occur in those locations. So my thing is that we vote tonight, we make this decision, we, we've heard from the residents, we've received numerous emails from, from our residents, and this has been going on for about six months now. It's time to bring it to an end.
Thank you, Mr. Aldred.
Thank you, Sheets, for coming in and your interest in developing in our community. I thank you for that. But pretty much everyone going down has said what I was going to say, so I'm going to keep this short. And although I believe the number is 41 gas stations in Farmington and Farmington Hills, and it's twice the density of any other neighboring communities, and that's part of the reasoning here that we changed the, changed our ordinance to make it more difficult. And I think, just as you said, we don't need another gas station at this location.
So I, I grew up in gas stations. My dad had a 24/7 gas station, exit 28 in Benton Harbor. I, I, I understand that business at least a little bit. And I appreciate that there's a time and a place for those businesses. 12-mile and Middle Belt, in my view, is not that place. And so I do not need to belabor this for the reasons stated by all the other council members. Again, I, I just cannot see where a postponement will make a difference. And so at this time, I am calling for a motion. Does someone, Dr. Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll make a motion. Resolve that the applications for PUD Plan 1 2024, including Site Plan 57, 54/7-2024, both dated July 17, 2024, submitted by Skilken Gold Real Estate Development, are denied because it does not meet all of the provisions set forth in Sections 34-3.20 of the zoning ordinance. And the proposed development will adversely affect the public health, welfare, and safety for the following reasons. I don't think that it's compatible with the area at all. I think it's too dense of an operation. I think the light, the noise, and other issues discussed do, are a negative effect on the area. I don't think there's a public benefit from this. We have talked on council about limiting the number of new gas stations, and I think that for those reasons, it will have an adverse effect on our neighborhoods in that area. And for those reasons, that is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there support?
A vote.
Okay, we have motion and support. This is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, unanimous. Motion carries. So the, hey, folks, I, I understand, and thank you, everyone, for coming, but we still have business on the agenda. So at this time...
I know we do.
Hey, folks, the meeting's still going. The meeting is still going. So at this time, we have public comment. We have received cards from two individuals. Mayor?
Item seven. Item seven.
Good item seven. Yes, like, oh, item seven.
Well, talk to your neighbors, you know, and see if, you know, they'd be willing to, you know, form a group.
Hey, folks, we still have business to do.
Thank you for coming out. Appreciate it. Thank you for staying so late.
We got a, we have a meeting. We got a meeting going on right now.
So we have item seven to come before us, new business.
Okay. All right. Item seven.
So item seven is consideration of approval of the introduction of an ordinance to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Boards, Commissions, and Councils to add Division 12 Innovation, Energy, and Environmental Sustainability Commission to provide for the establishment of said commission and its authority, purposes, duties, and membership. Is there a motion?
Yes, I can make a motion.
Mr. Aldred, we've been working on this a long time.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I appreciate that. I move that we resolve the City Council hereby approves the introduction of an ordinance amending the City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Boards, Commissions, and Councils to add 12 Innovation, Energy, and Environmental Sustainability Commission.
Motion and, and support by Ms. Boloware. This is a roll call vote. Councilmembers Bridges?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Wire?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
And Merritt?
Yes.
All right. Then that takes us to public comment. We have received two cards, Pamela Santo and Kathleen Muller. Are they still here?
No.
Okay. We will see them next meeting. That takes us to the city attorney report. Mr. Joppick?
Yes, thank you. You've received my report. I have nothing to change or add to it. Received.
Thank you very much. There being no further business to come before us. Our next meeting is January 27. That's going to be our joint meeting with the city of Farmington and Farmington Public Schools, and that will be here. And then our meeting after that is going to be February 3, 10?
When's the next meeting?
Next meeting, February 10.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, Monday, February 10. We'll see you then. Good night, good morning, Farmington Hills.